Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Contracts. Please silence your cell phone or electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do it via email to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Please do not approach the deists. If you need assistance, we'll be more than happy to help you. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here. It is so good to see you all. My name is Julie Wong and I have the chair. I have the pleasure of chairing the Committee on Contracts. And I recently had a baby four weeks ago, so if you could be patient with me, due to the state open meetings law, we just have to make it work. So, welcome to the fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget hearing for the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, or MOCs. MOC's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget total is $30.4 million, which includes $18.8 million for personnel services to support 202 positions and 100...oh, and six...one, sorry. Let me just collect myself. It was a long journey to get here. And $11.6 million for other than personnel services. This budget reflects a $17.4 million decrease as compared to the fiscal year 2024 adopted. The plan also includes pegs of $1.9 million in fiscal 2024 and $1.25 million in fiscal 2025. The Mayor's Office of Contract Service is responsible for overseeing, supporting, and promoting the city's procurement system. Unfortunately, in recent years, the city has been confronted with two large-scale crises that require the emergency procurement of goods and services. In both the city's response to COVID-19 and the influx of asylum seekers, MOC's ability to oversee and promote the city's procurement systems, provide necessary audits, and manage the central contract registry has been questioned. Since the start of the migrant crisis, for instance, many nonprofit agencies, human service providers, and businesses have reported contracting issues such as delayed payments, lack of transparency, and fraudulent services. This has returned...resulted in nonprofit providers not getting paid for their services in a timely manner. While we understand that these crises have served severely taxed agencies, it is concerning that the city's contracting office has been unable to respond in a timely manner to my clarification questions and those of my fellow council members. Not only will we examine how MOCs is handling their workload, but we want to know about any developments on the mayor's task force meant to improve the timeliness of payments to nonprofits. We want...we hope to be provided with updates on how this task force has worked with the Department of Education, specifically in regards to early childhood contracts in order to resolve their overdue disbursements. In addition, we will also examine how the task force has worked with the Department of Youth and Community Development and the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice in relation to delays in their contracts. At this hearing, we will delve into the mayor's recent announcement of the city's $740 million investment to human service provider contracts with implementation of a cost-of-living adjustment. Thank you. We're very, very happy and thank you to the COLA coalition for continuing to pay...fight for just pay. The committee seeks to understand how this will impact current and future providers. Finally, we hope to...we hope that MOCs will address some of the findings from the Controller's report on late contract payments by agencies and speak to all of the questions that the staff and Council of Finance have been asking since last December 2023. I'm looking forward to an open conversation and to hear in ways...in what ways the council can better...can better MOCs in this fiscal year to better service those that do business with the city and provide vital services to its residents. I'd like to thank my staff for their work, including Florentine Kabore, Nia Hyatt, Alex Polenoff, Alex Yablon, and my office staff as well, Nick Goloda and Isaac Blazenstein. I'd also like to recognize my colleagues who have joined us today, council members Gail Brewer. Thank you for joining us. And before we begin, I will ask the committee counsel to swear in the commissioner.
Good afternoon. Alex Polenoff, Senior Counsel. Will all members of the administration who are testifying today, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon. Before I begin my official testimony, just want to say good afternoon, Chair Wong, and congratulations on the birth of your new child and doing what mothers do best, a little bit of everything all at once and still killing it. So, congrats. Good afternoon, Chair Wong and members of the Contracts Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Mayor Adams's fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget for the Mayor's Office of Contract Services. I'm joined by Chief Change Officer Yasenia Markland, Chief Financial Officer Helga 94, and Deputy Chief of Staff Matt Sullivan. As an oversight and service agency, MOCs is dedicated to transforming processes to make it easier to do business with the city. Consistent with the priorities of the Adams administration, we have remained steadfast in our commitment to excellence in government, positioning the agency to play a critical role in enabling the city's economic recovery and looking ahead to address future challenges. Thanks to the four strategic priorities within the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, which include procurement reform, maximize MWE utilization, enhance community engagement, and digitization through Passport, we are making substantial progress at some of the administration's most pressing goals. Procurement is a critical means by which agencies deliver on their missions. In FY23, mayoral agencies including NYC Public Schools awarded over $41 billion in city contracts for goods, services, and construction. This represents a 9% increase over the previous year in which the city awarded nearly $38 billion in contracts. Of that $41 billion, human services accounted for $19 billion, remaining the largest contracting category and providing a pathway for critical services for childcare, homeless shelters, and after-school programs. As we have shared previously, MOCs plays a leadership role in the implementation and recommendations from the Joint Task Force to get nonprofits paid on time. Our progress in this area of contracting began with the Clear the Backlog initiative, which cleared over $6 billion in payments owed to nonprofits. We subsequently built on this progress by supporting agencies to reach 81% of on-time submissions to the Controller by July 1st in FY24, a 25% improvement from the previous year despite a 60% increase in contract volume and other competing priorities like asylum seeker response. By September, we had processed virtually the entirety of this portfolio. We're working with agencies again on the FY25 Timeless Initiative to build on last year's success through regular reporting, performance management, and clear escalation paths. In addition to the day-to-day work of getting contracts registered on time so that vendors can get paid, we have also been devoting significant attention to reforming the underlying policy and regulatory structure so that procurement is more timely in the long run. These major improvements include: the introduction of an allowance clause to human service contracts, which enables agencies to process anticipated budgetary increases without revising the entire procurement process for an amendment; the implementation of a multi-year council discretionary contract allowing providers to enter into three-year agreements for council discretionary contracts and bringing a major reduction in processing times in the coming fiscal year; a new and improved returnable grant fund program, which delivers on a key recommendation from the Joint Task Force to expand access to RGF loans. By streamlining the application and expanding eligibility, these changes enable provider partners of all sizes the opportunity to benefit from these loans. We've rolled out a contract dashboard to use a performance management tool for holding ourselves accountable and understanding where delays may occur. In partnership with the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, we have hosted two internal sessions with agency leadership to go through this data and to continue...we continue to iterate on what is available and look forward to rolling out to a broader audience in the future. The passing of Local Law 169, which requires MOCs to establish recommended timeframes for stages of the procurement process, setting the stage for further performance management. Based on a review of the Joint Task Force report, we can see that we are appropriately on pace to meet the short, medium, and long-term targets for most of the recommendations. We are also fully aware that our implementation of the task force initiatives is only successful so long as we have a technology system that is capable of maximizing our policy and process improvements. We are currently deep in the midst of the migration between systems from the legacy HHX accelerator to Passport, a Herculean endeavor of replacing a business practice that has been in place for over a decade, which affects billions of dollars in contracts and payments. While technology migrations of this scale are inherently difficult, fraught with unexpected issues and by no means representative of business as usual, we know there is light at the end of the tunnel and we will emerge better for it. One provider testified to this pain point last year, sharing that the city has "contract management systems that are inefficient, complex, and overburdensome because the Passport and Accelerator systems don't speak to each other." This is the exact problem we are addressing by shifting to a single centralized system from sourcing to payment, and we are fully confident that we will successfully complete this transition. In the meantime, I know that some providers out there are experiencing delays as a result of the cutover between systems, and I want to be clear to those providers that your concerns are the number one priority in my office and any high-priority issue should be escalated to my team. Every single day, we are focused on putting these technology tools in place so that you can spend less effort on administrative tasks and more on delivering the high-quality services that this city relies on. MOCs has taken an all-hands approach to being transparent about these technology changes to our agencies and vendors and putting in place safeguards so that system changes do not disrupt continuity of service. In December, we issued a directive for human service agencies to issue an additional 15% advance on human service contracts where providers were expected to submit invoices during the migration. And as of last week, agencies have issued over $530 million in advanced funding for the migration, providing necessary funding to mitigate the adverse impact of the transition. In the period leading up to the migration, we hosted 12 sessions with provider groups, attended by over 880 individuals, in addition to meeting with all of our agencies. We have also delivered over a dozen communication blasts to thousands of providers, letting them know of key timings, closure of certain activities, and other important information. We have been fully transparent throughout the process and are now focused on the nitty-gritty technical work that will resolve outstanding discrepancies and complete the migration. So far, in FY24, the city has dispersed over $1.7 billion through Passport, confirming that we have made substantial progress on this major migration. Looking ahead, from the current critical period, we remain committed to the delivery of Document Vault feature in Passport and planned expansion of functionality to include subcontractor management. Data for city procurement rests in multiple systems. While Passport is the entry point to doing business with the city, financial transactions are logged in FMS, the Controller maintains checkbook NYC, and subcontractors must go through the PE Information Portal, or PIP, and several agencies use unique systems of their own. Centralizing all of this work into one system as we are doing presently with HHS Accelerator brings New York City procurement into the 21st century digital operating model. In addition to contracting and technology reform, we're pleased to reaffirm the mayor's recent announcement of a major cost-of-living adjustment, or COLA, for the human services sector. The city's budget will include an almost 9.27% increase to city contracted human service workforce wages totaling $741 million. This comes on top of the Workforce Investment Initiative, which added $170-plus million in funding to human service contracts in its baseline. With this latest COLA, the human services sector can expect to see a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for FY25, FY26, and FY27. The addition of this funding marks a promise kept by this administration to acknowledge the importance of our human service sector to everything that we do as a city. We thank the mayor, the first deputy mayor, First Deputy Mayor Wright, Director Jiha, and the city council for delivering on this priority, and MOCs looks forward to the implementation steps ahead. Beyond the nonprofit sector, MOCs has also played a leading role in the New York City Capital Reform Task Force over the past two years. This initiative brought together a range of key stakeholders across the city, including leaders from the private sector and MWEs to devise recommendations to improve the city's capital project delivery process with the goal of reducing timelines, saving taxpayer dollars, enhancing participation, and improving the city's ability to respond to emerging needs. We've continued to make progress on several of these recommendations, including eliminating financial control board reviews for contracts over $50 million, which led to roughly an 80% reduction in contract value going through this duplicative review process in 2023; increasing the MWE noncompetitive small purchase threshold to $1.5 million for agencies purchasing eligible goods, services, and construction. This additional threshold increase has better positioned the city to provide a more equitable procurement process and provide additional opportunities to support small businesses; championing legislation leading to the signing of e-bidding, allowing prospective partners to submit digital bids and offers instead of in paper; revising the implementation of Executive Order 50, streamlining the verification of vendor compliance with TLS process to eliminate burdensome and outdated paperwork for vendors; repealing the pre-award review provisions of Executive Order 102 of 2007 to streamline duplicative reviews on prevailing wage compliance that added months to applicable procurement; and championing legislation that will allow the city to use owner-controlled insurance programs, OSIPS, and contractor-controlled insurance programs, CSIPS, to drive down the cost of insurance. In addition to the legislation that will allow us to establish a citywide small business construction mentorship program. And we're also optimistic that the state legislature will pass our proposed contract public hearing legislation and look forward to updating this committee on our progress. Our teams also support the MWE program in partnership with our colleagues at the Office of MWE and Department of Small Business Services. In FY23, the city achieved its highest award total to MWEs under Local Law 1 in history at nearly $1.42 billion and over $6 billion awarded to MWEs under the 1-NYC program. MWE utilization also experienced a significant increase with a rate of 27.9% in comparison to 22.9% in FY22, marking one of the highest utilization rates the city has achieved since the program started in 2015. Our preliminary data for the first two quarters of FY24 indicates that we remain on a strong path with 28.9% utilization so far. Instrumental to this success has been the MWE noncompetitive small purchase method, which has been unlocked through legislative increases from $500,000 to $1 million in FY23 and now up to $1.5 million in FY24. The MWE noncompetitive small purchase method showed a 60% increase in contract value from over $110 million in FY22 to over $107 million...$70 million in FY23, and again, FY24 is looking strong with $110 million awarded using this method just through two quarters. With further signs of improvement in contracts awarded to disparity within disparity firms, the administration is full steam ahead on putting equity at the center of city procurement. Finally, MOCs has continued to build on its new outreach and engagement approach to reach existing and prospective partners where they are and better facilitate the learning of our systems, rules, and policies that guide New York City procurement. Our learning and development team has published dozens of resources which are available to vendors and city staff and have made our learning services available at numerous public events. These include business mixers done in partnership with Hostess Community College and putting together simplified resources that will help vendors who are just starting out. Furthermore, we have expanded our Reach Through MOCs in Your Neighborhood, a series of in-person workshops where we bring Passport know-how to locations throughout the five boroughs and assist vendors with any questions they may have. Through our training programs such as the Procurement Training Institute, we've delivered more than 30 trainings to over 6,200 agency users and a monthly webinar series for vendors on getting started contracting with the city that has had over 6,000 vendor attendees. MOC's total budget for FY24 is $44 million, including $20.4 million for personnel services, $23.6 million for OTPS. The bulk of our budget is devoted to the Accenture and Ivalua contracts, which maintain Passport and are valued at $90 million over 10 years for Ivalua and nearly $45 million over six years for Accenture. In order to maximize savings, we were faced with some challenging decisions, looking at a mixture of PS and OTPS reductions to meet our peg target, given the difficult budget environment facing the city. Despite these challenges, our headcount has remained stable at 187, up from 173 in FY23. Our current budgeted headcount is 215, with 28 vacancies currently open, and we're excited to be moving beyond the hiring freeze recently announced by the Office of Management and Budget. We continue to work with OMB to determine appropriate levels of funding for the initiatives carried out by MOCs. MOCs has a significant mandate, which made more work ahead to expand on the wins we have already secured: modernizing the process through Passport, leading procurement reform across key portfolios, bringing our engagement efforts to meet people where they are, and instilling equity throughout the procurement process. We thank the committee for your partnership in supporting these key initiatives so far and are happy to take any questions you may now have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Flores. It's good to see you again. We haven't seen you here in a while. This was a great testimony. Thank you for all the good news and all that you've achieved in the last two years. It's really been amazing and it's really a pleasure to partner with you. We still have some work to do, but first and foremost, I just want to take a moment to celebrate. I know some of our human service providers are in the room. Congratulations again on your cost-of-living adjustment victory. Thank you so much for all of your advocacy and all that you do, because without you, our city could not run. So, thank you for doing all that you do. So, we are really excited for the cost-of-living adjustment, but let's talk about the current headcount vacancies and the pegs for MOCs. So, in your testimony, you just shared about for fiscal year '24, $44 million is the total budget, $20.4 million for personnel services, $23.6 million for OTPS, and the bulk of the budget devoted to Accenture and Ivalua, $90 million for over 10 years for Ivalua, and $45 million over six years for Accenture. Can you break that down for us? For the yearly costs, is that an even split for all of the years for the costs? And for Accenture and Ivalua, was there any adjustment to their expected costs at all because of the pegs? Or has it remained as targeted or forecasted in the past fiscal years?
Thank you, Chair Wong. I'll begin and then hand over to my CFO, Helga 94, for additional details. As you know, during previous hearings, the cost of Passport is multifaceted. Obviously, there are the ongoing costs for maintaining a system, and that is part of the course for any system. Tool, in particular, the size of Passport. You know, we are probably one of the largest municipalities with such a robust end-to-end system, and Passport is like FMS, the infrastructure...part of the infrastructure for the city of New York at this time and will continue to be in the future. So, there are some costs that are consistent across the board for maintenance. There are some costs that are consistent for ensuring that we have support for maintaining that system. And then, as we testified at the last hearing, there are some costs that fluctuate that are attached to approved modules and workflow changes that we are continuing to improve upon throughout the life cycle of Passport. And as you know, when Passport first started, the first release was essentially putting the whole Paper Vendex system into Passport, and we continue to iterate and improve Passport and including additional functionality. But happy to pass off to my CFO, 94, for additional details if you'd like.
Yeah, so if you'd like more specifics, there are...there are a host of one-time costs in our yearly budget that are just for enhancements to Passport that were added, building out the system. So, in our current year, we have some one-time costs associated with PDW, I mean, our procurement data warehouse, sunsetting HHS Accelerator, and migrating all those contracts that are from that system to Passport. That is part of the cost. And then also, costs associated with DocuVault and building that out. So, there are a couple of one-time costs. The host of that, just in FY24, is $13 million. So, it's a big chunk of the budget that is just one time and it shouldn't be there, and we have that throughout the years since the beginning of Passport.
So, for all of us in this room, our number one concern for the pegs for MOCs is ensuring that you have the personnel to do your job, which is all the procurement and contracting services, as well as making sure that we have the money set aside for Ivalua, as well as Passport, for Document Vault, all of the technology enhancements that you cling on to hope for, to see these enhancements, and we want to make sure that those are still on schedule. So, can you confirm that with the adjustments, that we can still expect everything to come online as scheduled? Because in the preliminary plan includes a peg which provides OTPS savings of $921,239,000 in fiscal year '24, $785,561 in fiscal year '25, and the baseline of $1.6 million starting in fiscal year '26 for the renegotiated contracts on Passport maintenance. So, according to your office, MOCs was able to renegotiate the contract down from $24 million to $16.6 million, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. We hope that there are savings to be found by taking on more duties and receiving more discounts with the vendor. So, can you just, one, confirm to us that everything will come online as scheduled, all of the enhancements that we need? And, two, if there's anything that we should be concerned about, about the timeline, if there were costs that, while being renegotiated, were going to cause delays?
Thank you for that question, Chair Wong. First and foremost, I just want to thank you again for your support and this committee's support and many other council members on additional committees. It's really important as part of the challenge of any technology tool to have the support across multiple areas of government, and since day one, you have been a champion of technology. So, I want to thank you and appreciate that. I can guarantee and say to you that we are on schedule for our initially planned rollouts. Again, in technology, and you know this better than I do, Chair Wong, from your past experience, that we really allow ourselves a reasonable timeframe, and we do everything with a thought process of understanding that that reasonable timeframe includes normal adjustments to a timeline. But overall, we are on schedule despite the cuts that you mentioned earlier in your question. And really, a part of that has to do with, we have always been since day one, looking at how do we continuously cross-train? How do we continuously ensure that we have different levels of knowledge around Passport? Not only the technology, but it's the support of Passport as well, right? So, the technology is obviously a big piece in order to build the workflow and the changes that we anticipate. But equally important, we feel, is ensuring that our staff have the appropriate knowledge to support our agencies and that we have the appropriate tools and training and change management to support our vendors. And so, we've been doubling down on that from day one before the pegs, and so, we feel that we're in a good place in order to continue with our original plan of rolling out much-needed and loved Document Vault that was not in Passport before. And as I mentioned in my testimony, really going to be game-changing to have subcontracting management within the system as well end of this calendar year.
So, for Document Vault and other enhancements, you expect that it'll come live in the fourth quarter of this calendar year?
Yeah, we're on schedule for having them come on live by the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Can you help us understand also where the savings came from, that you were able to renegotiate from $24 million to $16.6 million? Is that just from...the reestimate, is that mostly from staffing? Where you have just now said that from cross-training, I know Matt Sullivan and there was a team of folks that we had met with when I first came to your office, when I was pregnant with my first son, that kind of functioned as kind of like your CTO and tech team? So, do those...do those positions still exist, and are those the positions that helped you bring down the costs?
So, I'll start, council member, and pass off to CFO, 94. So, again, it was a multitude of...a multitude of things. Obviously, only certain people can build code, and so, I'm not suggesting that everyone knows how to code now. Matt and I don't know how to code yet. Maybe one day. But there, again, the...what we did was we negotiated our maintenance contract down, and we were already thinking about and working on reallocating internal resources due to the decommissioning of Accelerator, and so, we had already been working on a long roadmap of ensuring that those resources that we have internally, that we're supporting Accelerator, were going to be folded into our Passport team regardless of the peg. And so, you know, we really just were very intentional about that, and we were able to, I think, full steam ahead, continue on making sure that we were on track with our migration and continue to be on track with the other functionality that we expect to happen at the end of this calendar year. But happy to dive in more details, if you'd like, specifically on the budget line with our CFO.
So, we were able to reduce our contract, and we did reduce some of the consultants, the types of consultants that were part of that contract and took on those roles through the cross-training. And it also was a good thing for us because we wanted to have more ownership of the system. So, this was part of this strategic goal to take on some of that. We also were able to reach savings through just contract terms. So, we provided...we were provided a discount of 3% by doing six-month prepayments. So, that helped save costs of the contract as well. So, through those two major initiatives and also just changing the terms of the contract, we were able to reach these savings.
How many consultants were you able to switch out for in-house?
There's 393 pages in this document combined. The combined PDF comes out to 300. The combined PDF comes out to three hundred and ninety-three. So, I am assuming that I need to remove
Hi Vanessa.
This is one document. I no longer need the cover page and the agenda of each one. I will create one agenda that has everything. And I can remove the cover pages. Because what's the point of having different cover pages?
Vanessa, we can hear you.
Right?
Hello?
Vanessa?
Right. We just need one cover. Hello?
Okay, while we wait for Vanessa, I also want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Eric Botcher. Okay.
Okay, yeah, so you asked for the number of consultants that were reduced in the contract. The official number was seven, but it's more, we don't think of it in terms of the number because it's also like, it's over a three-year cycle, the contract term. So, they do over thousands of hours. And that in total is the total savings.
Got it, thank you. And I think this is a good time for us to segue into the headcount and vacancies. So, as of March twenty twenty-four, how many vacant positions does MOCs have? And how many vacancies has been eliminated since we adopted fiscal year twenty-four budget? I think you spoke about it in your testimony, but if we can return to them?
You said as of the adopted budget or as of our current budget right now?
So, as of March twenty twenty-four, how many vacant positions does MOCs have? And how many have been eliminated since we adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget?
We currently have twenty-eight vacancies, but that's including our agency partners. In terms of MOCs direct, we have eighteen vacancies.
Okay. And what is your current vacancy rate?
Our current vacancy rate is, I can actually provide that to you in a little bit. If you just give me a couple of minutes.
And what is MOC's attrition rate in fiscal year twenty-four?
I can provide that right now. It's actually negative three percent. We've been able, we were, it was, we were very proactive in the beginning of the year, especially since the migration. We wanted to make sure that we were staffed up. And also, right before the hiring freeze, when they announced it, OMB did give us a leeway time to put in our pars before it took effect. And we took full advantage. And we've been working really closely with OMB to make sure that we were able to hire up.
I am glad to hear that the current budgeted headcount for two hundred fifteen with twenty-eight vacancies currently open and how you were able to remain stable at one eighty-seven up from one seventy-three. So, I'm excited to hear that you are increasing headcount and you're moving beyond the hiring freeze. For, as of February twenty twenty-four, has there been any increase in the use of outside contractors by MOCs due to the loss of full-time positions? Because I know that we just talked about how you were able to decrease the vendor budget for Evalua and Passport by decreasing the number of consultants. And are there other contracts open for consultants other than the ones that exist with Accenture right now?
Yes, I mean, we do have other contracts. Those are our big, major ones. In terms of increasing, no, we have not increased. But there are some supplemental contracts that we have. Like, for example, we have LifeRay. We also have, consultants-wise, not as many as we would think. I can provide more details.
Just to clarify, Chair Wong, I know that sometimes there seems to be a shift from one use of consultants to another use of consultants. So, the reduction in our contracts for maintenance with Accenture did not result in other contracts for consultants in order to provide those services. The contracts that we have are already in place or were going to be put in place as part of sort of the ecosystem to support Passport.
Okay, so, am I understanding correctly that for MOCs, even with the headcount decreases that you had to deal with or had to work with for the last fiscal years, that you did not supplement yourself with?
There's no swapping with additional contracts for consultants for that.
And there wasn't an increase in those contracts? Were there further decreases other than in Passport? Was that a pattern where you were looking to have savings by decreasing contractors, especially consultants from MOCs?
Thank you for that question, Chair Wong. We had some additional reductions in order to meet the pegs, but they were for contracts that we had planned to enter into that we had not started yet. And we thought, we made the decision to not go forward with them. And again, in sort of that holistic approach to ensuring that we had appropriate resources across the office and are remaining in existing contracts to support Passport adequately.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Sandy Nurse. Okay. The preliminary plan includes peg savings of fifty-one thousand dollars resulting from a less-than-anticipated Personnel Services, including two vacant positions housed in the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services. We had been just beginning to build a relationship with Ms. Karen Ford, but we have learned that she is no longer with us. So, which two vacant positions are these savings related to? And how long have these positions been vacant?
Thank you, Chair Wong. Do you have that information?
Yes. Yes. One of those positions was a senior advisor position and a policy advisor position. And the other one was, it was repositioned, it was more undefined. We don't have clarity on that because they redetermined that. But it was two. The first one was definitely a senior policy advisor.
And how long have the positions been vacant?
We don't, Chair Wong, I don't have in front of us the amount of time that particular position was vacant from the time that we got an approved par, but definitely can follow up with a specific timeframe for you.
Originally, when the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services opened, ten people worked there. How many people work in this office now currently?
CFO, Nyomfor, will give you the current headcount.
The current headcount is four, but there was never ten people fully working at Mons. And because they were provided headcount recently as of the ADP, as of the beginning of the adopted budget. So, they've been hiring up. And then, as soon as that happened, there was the initial peg. So, I believe, I don't believe there was ever, there was never ten people fully in the office.
So, for the sake of clarity, Chair Wong, just the number of individuated headcount? Is? Ten?
The current headcount is
Budgeted headcount for Mons?
The current budgeted headcount is seven.
Okay, so it's seven. So, according to the Controller's January twenty twenty-four annual summary contracts report, over seventy-two percent of total contract value for all human service contracts was registered late in fiscal year twenty-four. So, that's four thousand two hundred eighty-two total contracts and more than ninety-five percent of total contract value late in the first half of fiscal year twenty-four. And I know that our human service providers are in this room to testify on these late payments and how detrimental they are. So, for me to hear what's happening to the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, which was created to remedy these exact issues and these pains that human service providers are feeling. So, considering the reports that have been receiving consistently delayed payments to nonprofits, why does the Mayor's Office of Nonprofits have such small staff? And how is the work divided amongst the office? And how will this change in the relationship that Karen Ford was working with MOCs? And is Karen's position being refilled? What is the status of her position?
Thank you, Chair Wong. First and foremost, and I believe you may have been at the hearing that we had jointly with Mons when Director Ford was appointed. And I want to thank Director Ford for all the work that she put into place and really a framework and a foundation for where we are now, a lot to build upon that office. We work very closely with them. We have full support from City Hall. And the acting director, Diane Mehmet, is extremely talented, very experienced, and hit the ground running on her relationship with us and continued relationship with the sector. We, as I said, work closely with Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services. They are obviously a leader from a policy perspective. And continue to be trusted partner with the sector as well. And we anticipate there is a search going on now for a new director. But again, acting director Diane Mehmet is very qualified, extremely qualified, and there is seamless transition in order to keep the work going with Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services. As it relates to the Controller report, you know, I want to just say that at a high level, there, some of the data points that you mentioned do not, from our review, did not include the backup data, line by line, for us to necessarily indicate where the difference is in our data versus their data, line by line. And we'll say globally, the report included certain types of contracts, certain kinds of non-procurement transactions, or non-mayoral agencies in some instances where it's a little bit of apples and oranges. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with the Controller's Office. As you know, we have a very close relationship with them, particularly in the nonprofit task force. And they've been extremely supportive and great partners in a lot of the work that we've been doing in that task force and the capital task force. But we have sort of different numbers from when we look at, clearly, the contracts that are covered under the Procurement Policy Board in terms of timeliness. As you know, we were able to submit eighty-one percent of contracts for FY twenty-four to the Controller last fiscal year on time. And by the end of the summer, we had surpassed over ninety-eight percent. And so, there's always work to be done. And we partner very well with all of our strategic partners in the sector. And they have me on speed dial. And if there's something that they don't like, they know how to reach me. And we listen carefully and adjust and iterate in terms of the work that we're doing and continue to appreciate their partnership in really influencing the work that we're doing going forward.
Thank you. And I look forward to working with the acting director, Diane, as well until the position is filled. The preliminary plan includes a reduction of seventy-nine thousand in fiscal year twenty-four and a baseline of reduction of two hundred seven thousand in fiscal year twenty-five. And the out-year is labeled as OEO adjustment. This is a result of two positions transferred from the Mayor's Office of Operations to the Office of Technology Innovation. What relation does the Mayor's Office of Operations have with MOCs? And can you explain why this position was transferred to OTI? And what responsibilities were included or associated with these positions? Especially since we have been talking about the importance of technology and its role in the MOCs' responsibilities.
Thank you for that question, Chair Wong. As you know, we are, the Mayor's Office, but we have our own agency code, which was something that happened a number of years ago. So, we are no longer, as we were in the past, under Agency Code zero zero two. And with that, it's a larger mayor's office now. We do have lines on our budget that are associated with some of the smaller mayor's offices. And so, that was an adjustment that was deemed appropriate by City Hall and the CTO. And obviously, CTO Fraser continues to do a lot of great work in consolidation across the portfolio. So, definitely, we'd have to get back to you with more details on their sort of programmatic decision there. But obviously, we implement the changes in the best interest of those offices.
And I'm going to shift gears a little bit in what we have been meeting with MOCs the most about in hearings with your team members about emergency procurement. It has been the most interesting topic by the public. And I know that you've been part of the Controller's team in your prior role. So, going back to the Controller's report, on November thirty, twenty twenty-three, the Controller released a report evaluating the city's use of emergency procurement. The Procurement Policy Board, rules, and city charter provides agencies with an accelerated procurement process when emergency circumstances arise. Agencies must receive prior approval from the Controller's Office and the Law Department. After this, agencies are supposed to submit formal documentation for review to the Controller and the Law Department within fifteen days of the contract's start date. The Controller's report found that the vast majority of submissions were received later than fifteen days after the contract started and that agencies submitted only twenty-seven percent of asylum seeker-related written determination within fifteen days. What was the cause of these considerable delays? And what is the administration doing to ensure that required documentations on emergency contracts are submitted to the Controller in the required timeframe going forward?
Thank you, Chair Wong. First, I'd like to say, again, we appreciate the reports issued by the Controller's Office. And obviously, it's an important role of transparency and holding us accountable in the administration. That report, I want to say again, just as a baseline, some of the terminology and some of the findings included sole-source procurements and non-competitive procurements in that bucket of the findings, which are separate and apart from emergency procurements subject to the rules of the PBB and the charter. Just for a clarification, I think the date of filing is actually fifteen days of the date of filing and not the start date, which I think was issued in the report. So, nevertheless, you know, the emergency process, as you know, is quite different than a regular contract process. In this case, for emergency procurements, unlike competitive or non-competitive procurement transactions, the Controller is aware and a part of the process early on. And as you correctly noted, Chair Wong, an agency cannot even move forward with the use of an emergency procurement method. Until such time, they receive approval from the Law Department and the Controller's Office. They also have to come back to the Controller's Office after they've awarded the contract. And then, it goes to the Controller's Office again for filing purposes, which is akin to what people think of registration because the FMS button is being pushed, but it's actually quite different from a legal standpoint. And so, the Controller actually has a part and a role in this process multiple times and early on and is quite different from any other procurement process. So, we think the finding in that report is slightly off, but obviously, continue to endeavor to ensure that our agencies do things on time. We've issued a directive to our agencies along those lines as well, and we'll continue to monitor performance.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Brewer because in twenty twenty-three, we had a joint hearing between Contracts and Committee of Oversight Investigations for Budget Oversight Hearing to ensure transparency on how we're spending money on emergency contracts. So, Councilmember Brewer?
Yeah, and at that time, thank you, Madam Chair, the H&amp;H said specifically that they were going to go to RFPs and bids, and they were going to, I guess, on a volunteer basis, go to the Controller's Office. Has any of that happened to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you, Councilmember. I do not have all of the detail in front of me today around the whole asylum portfolio, but I will say that H&amp;H has been extremely active in issuing RFPs. They've issued RFPs for legal services. They've issued RFPs for food services and for emergency services. So, they have been very intentional and robust in their efforts to competitively bid out contracts that they initially may have entered into as an emergency contract. And they continue to make a lot of progress there. And I know that staff from H&amp;H have testified at some of the hearings before with specifics of the savings in some of those contracts. But that is, they're full steam ahead there, Councilmember.
Okay. I mean, the one to the credit of the staff, and the chair knows this, we've been actually calling the different vendors and getting breakdowns from them. But the only one we cannot get is my favorite contractor. You know exactly who it is, and that's Doc Go. So, are they an example or a bad example or a good example? What's with their contract? I asked the last time, I have no end date, I have no information, I have nothing. And they seem to get quite a bit of money from the City of New York. So, is that something that you monitor, H&amp;H monitors? What's going on with Doc Go?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. That contract is with a mayoral agency, HPD. And so, the basic information, obviously, is not only available on Passport Public but on checkbook in terms of the contract term and the dollar value. In terms of sort of assigning a value judgment on any particular contract, I know you have also had the pleasure or displeasure of having seen the city gone through many different types of emergencies, whether they're man-made or natural or otherwise. And as you know, I think emergencies are really an evolving process. And at the beginning of any emergency, as we did with COVID, as we did after nine eleven, as we did with Sandy, the most important thing for the City of New York, which is codifying the charter and the PBB, is for us to address the immediate need. But what has been really, I think, remarkable in this administration is from day one, we looked at the contracts that were from COVID-nineteen and issued a directive telling agencies that they needed to get in there and not extend and replace those with competitive contracts. And you're seeing the same thing in evolution with this particular asylum seeker crisis as well. But happy to, obviously, after the hearing, if there's information you have.
Doc Go is a problem. Okay. What are the contract challenges, if there are, in transitioning HERCs from H&amp;H to DHS or other agencies? The reason I ask is, I know at least one contract that's being transferred. So, I didn't know, we were told that that's being transferred. So I didn't know, we were told that others are going to be transferred to DHS. Is that something that you're involved in? Is it happening, et cetera?
Thank you, Councilmember. I will first say, you know, for today's budget hearing, I do not have all of the facts and details in front of me for all of the contracts related to responding to asylum seeker. In general, obviously, we work closely with all of our agencies as an oversight, ensuring that they're following the right procurement method. And we actually have wonderful strategic partnerships with all of our agencies, not only in response to asylum seeker, but a multitude of contracting issues for them to meet their mission-driven results and their goals. And so we do provide technical assistance. We provide strategic and procurement expertise and overall decision-making for how to address in a holistic way the asylum seeker crisis that we're dealing with, has many individuals across the city working on it in efficient manner.
But if it goes from H&amp;H to DHS, you would be involved in that case, right, or not?
Well, obviously, as an oversight, we oversee DHS contracts.
That's what I'm saying.
Decisions in terms of, at any given time, where any emergency contract should stand is a holistic approach. And we're not, we're obviously wouldn't be the only ones making that decision. We work with our partners across the city. And that is, that holds true, not just now, that holds true for every emergency. Having been on the other side for many years and having been at the Mayor's Office during Sandy, it would be foolhardy for there to be only one agency overseeing the decisions and how to best address an emergency that's a citywide emergency.
Okay. The other issue is the faith-based organizations. I'm very focused on wishing that more of them would be able to support the migrant community. So I know that there's three or four that sit out of the fifty so far. But I want to know, are you involved with the contracts for the faith-based organizations? Obviously, there's an umbrella group that is supposedly helping trying. We've got the, I don't know, between these, I don't understand the fire department sometimes. We don't, we don't need as many sprinkler systems as they think. We've got two exits. We've been doing this with Americans for years, American New Yorkers. I've slept in synagogues and churches over the years. So anyway, my question is, are there any contracts with these types of groups? Are you involved? Are you overseeing? Why are they so slow to get going?
Councilmember, I will have to defer to, I know, some of the other hearings where this has come up. I will say that the administration, as you know, is very dedicated to our relationship with faith-based organizations, not only for asylum seeker, but a multitude of contracts and support. And we really feel like that is a part of the fabric of how we engage with our communities. And I will say, the Mayor holds many events, many sessions, many conversations with faith-based organizations, and it has been his intent, obviously, to continue to increase their participation here as well, while ensuring that, as the City of New York, we're following the regulations and rules to ensure safety for everyone who's in our care.
Okay. I guess, overall, you know, I think you have a lot, the Mayor has a lot of, I don't know what these groups are, but a lot of individual oversight things coming out of the Mayor's Office. But how is the city coordinating contracts across all agencies for asylum seekers? And the reason I ask is that the Chair and I and many others, we've been to so many hearings on this topic. We've done investigations. We've done oversight. I mean, you have at least four or five, maybe more, agencies working on the asylum. I'm a big supporter of these migrant families. But who is coordinating the contracts? It is hard to get the data. I'll be honest with you. And so it doesn't seem like we're completely on top of it. But, you know, in some cases, you can't do H&amp;H. I got it. But then, it's not clear who is. And so what is it coordinating for asylum seeker contracts?
Thank you for that question. You know, as I mentioned earlier, while it may seem, while we're in it right now, that this is unique in terms of response, having been through many different emergencies from a contracting perspective, it is vital that you have multiple people as part of this process, so that you are not making ill-informed decisions around what's in the best interest of the city, that will reach the most individuals in terms of addressing the emergency, that we are always constantly iterating in terms of price and programmatic, programmatic goals. And ultimately, you know, the Mayor, whether it's this Mayor or previous Mayors, is responsible for coordinating with all of his chief staff, which includes offices like my own and others that have testified at hearings before. So I know, I apologize, I know it seems frustrating, but we will continue to be as transparent and give you the information as it continues to be an evolving situation.
So you feel that there's a lot of coordination and that, well, the Chair has asked many times, why does it cost this X for this agency and Y for that agency for what seems to be the same service?
Well, I will say, Councilmember, you know, again, that is an issue, as you know, that permeates outside of the situation of an emergency, right? And so some of that has to do with the time that you may be doing the procurement, the rates in the market, and also the specifics of the particular needs of that contract. So just for one example, you know, if you need something delivered within an hour versus you need something-
I never do that, and I hate those dark stores, et cetera. Go ahead.
If you need something delivered within an hour, and there's a programmatic need for that that we need to respond to as a City of New York versus something that can be delivered in twenty-four hours, in our personal lives, we would see the difference in pricing as well. The important thing, I just want to reiterate, that there is a constant focus, as you know, with Director Jiha, with the Mayor, and across the city, of ensuring that we are both providing compassionate services to asylum seekers, while also, in parallel, maintaining our vigilance about having the best prices possible.
One last question. This is not related, but the people who, everybody's pleased at the three-three-three percent increase for the, everybody's happy. Except, just want to be clear, that when your second year comes along, you baseline the first year. Is that correct? In other words, the three percent increase is baseline. Is that correct or not?
You're right, Councilmember. We are extremely excited to have been able to stand with our partners at City Council and with the sector in their very persistent JustPay campaign and be able to have an investment of over nine percent over three years. We're working really closely with OMB on that process, and we'll be happy to come back with more details in terms of the implementation. As you know, that's in addition to over one-hundred-seventy million dollars that was invested through the Workforce Enhancement Initiative. So we're continuing to march forward full steam with our commitment to our partners in nonprofit sector, but happy to come back with more details as we go through the implementation process.
It's not baseline yet, but you're considering everything. Is that what you're saying?
We're working very closely with our partners at Office of Management and Budget for the implementation.
You're better at the rhetoric than I am. So it's not baseline. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I want to return to how the city's coordinating contracts across all city agencies for asylum seekers. It's to my understanding that OTI and H&amp;H had spearheaded a program called, or a platform called HOST, to ensure that there was centralization of all the data for all the city agencies when it came to asylum seekers. So with your testimony on acknowledging how important it is that we have platforms and technology like Document Vault, so that there are transparencies as well as streamlined abilities to communicate amongst agencies, especially during a time of an emergency like an asylum seeker crisis. So can you help me understand your knowledge of how HOST is being used? And if at all, does that allow you to ensure that there is better coordination amongst the agencies? Because as Councilmember Brewer was saying, I think everyone is kind of looking to understand how the coordination is happening, and if at all, how are the agencies speaking to each other? Because it is clear from our hearings, as well as from the contracts themselves, that there is not a lot of standardization for the same services that are being provided. And I know that a Document Vault, when it comes live, it would help resolve a lot of these issues, but for the time being, what you're seeing on the ground?
Thank you for that question, Chair Juan. I will definitely have to get back to you with more details on HOST. I did not come with that information at hand. I apologize. I will say, as I mentioned to Councilmember Brewer, there is a robust amount of coordination, starting at City Hall, across all of the agencies. As you know, the administration created the Office of Asylum Seeker Services OASO in order to facilitate and ensure that there was standardization in our response to the asylum seeker situation. As it relates to documentation and standardization in contracting processes, again, we, as you know, we are doing the hard work of not only dismantling some of the rules and regulations that have come through the process for many decades, but also, while we're doing that, synergizing the processes and building that into Passport where appropriate. Having said that, again, I do need to reiterate that in response to an emergency, that we will be leaning heavily, as always, in any emergency situation, in the framework of our processes. But the important thing is the emergency procurement method allows us to first and foremost, meet the need in front of us in order to provide safety for New Yorkers. And so that will never necessarily be a one-size-fits-all, because that would definitely not be in the best interest of New Yorkers when we meet the need at the time of an emergency.
And I know that Chair Brewer has left, but at every single hearing, your team could probably testify that she has been going really hard against Daco. And her number one, her number one concern is wanting or desiring for nonprofits to provide these services in these multimillion or multibillion-dollar contracts for asylum seekers, especially because they're the ones in the front lines who have the language access, who have the experience, who have the trust of our city to do this work. Yet, what we hear often over and over again from our nonprofit service providers is that they simply do not have the capital to upfront the cost to do the hiring and build capacity for hundreds and thousands of people that are coming through our doors. So from the concerns that we have, I was wondering what your thoughts are on how we can change the current procurement process and our late payments, as well as the contracting services, to allow nonprofits to compete in the same way for these million-dollar contracts, so that the ones that we trust, who are the trusted faces and the voices of our districts, can compete and be part of the asylum seeker resources?
Thank you for that question, Chair Juan. I think, as we mentioned earlier, and you know, it can't be overstated, from day one, part of our commitment in collaboration with the Controller's Office in the Joint Task Force Report was an important signal that we see nonprofits and understand that we have not always held up our end of the bargain, which is why we have been working since day one, whether it was the backlog initiative and unlocking six billion dollars worth of retroactive contracts, getting contracts to the Controller on time so that they can get paid, increasing functionality in Passport to ensure that everything is transparent and we're being held accountable. We would say that over two hundred contracts, as you know, from previous hearings, have been entered into in response to asylum seekers and our ability to meet the needs as they're coming through. And many of those contracts are with nonprofits. But we continue, as I mentioned earlier, to look at our current portfolio and either rebid or readjust and reiterate, as this is an evolving emergency. But we're looking outside of just asylum seeker and obviously, our continued partnership with nonprofits. As I mentioned in my testimony, as we're doing the decommissioning of Accelerator, which is a legacy system that has been around for over ten years, we were really thinking intentionally around how do we provide the support and the services both to our agencies and our nonprofit sector, so that we can mitigate any payment issues? Because technology is technology, and, you know, a great plan is not necessarily ever going to be a hundred percent. What happens on the ground with technology, which is why we'd issued a directive to our agencies to, in addition to the normal twenty-five percent advance that is issued at the beginning of the fiscal year on human service contracts, directing them to issue additional advances to ensure that there was absolutely no possibility for a delay in payment. And today, to date, we've actually issued already five-hundred-and-thirty million dollars in additional advances for contracts impacted by the migration. So definitely want to continue partnering with you and others on this committee and other committees for ideas and on how we can continue to improve. But first and foremost for us is that we understand you have to get paid. We are providing service to us, and it is our job to pay you in order to do the job that we have contracted with you. And we understand that there's still room for improvement there.
I think this is a good segue to start talking about the Human Services Cost of Living Adjustment. So on March fourteenth, as we celebrated earlier today, Mayor Adams announced that the city would provide seven-hundred-and-forty-one million dollars to give employees at city's nonprofit services, service providers, pay increases. This comes months after negotiations, or years, between the city and JustPay, the grassroots organization for human service providers. The Mayor's Plan provides a three percent COLA over the next three years. And as Councilmember Brewer said, as she stormed out, that it has not been baselined, and she wants to see it baseline. Advocates are claiming that this investment reverses years of human service providers being overlooked and underpaid, and there's still more to go. But can you help us understand the mechanism for disbursement for these funds? How will nonprofits receive this increase?
Thank you for that question, Chair Juan. As I mentioned earlier, before Councilmember Brewer stepped out, that we are working closely with OMB for implementation. And our, first and foremost, as we, again, everything that we do is, in our North Star, is that we can't make it harder. We got to make it easier. And so our implementation strategy, you know, is being finalized, ensuring that we are getting these funds to our contractors, which, as you know, begin in the next fiscal year, which is upon us, and in the out years, that we're doing that in a way that is as streamlined as possible and that reduces burden on our contractors. So we'd be happy to come back and report success in implementation of releasing those funds as soon as possible.
And what will nonprofits be required to do to receive their increased disbursement? Or is that still part of what you're working on?
Thank you. That's still part of the implementation plan, and we're working very closely with our partners at OMB.
Okay. And we just want to put on the record that there are concerns from providers that there are going to be modifications to the COLA. We hope that there are only positive modifications, like baselining their COLA. And are there considerations for modifying terms of agreement? So I guess that's the question. Are you looking to modify terms of agreement?
Chair Juan, the excitement about the agreement that was announced both by the Speaker, the Mayor, and the sector, is the plan that we are working closely with OMB to implement.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the Controller's Report, or go back to the Controller's Report on Late Contract Payments by Agencies. On January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, the Controller published a report stating that two-thirds of contracts were submitted late for registration. And as you also testified or put on the record, that there seems to be an apple-to-oranges comparison, and that there is disagreement on what is the data that is being used. So could you help us understand more? The report disclosed that this is a worsening trend from the Controller's Office, that late registrations have increased from fifty-two percent in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, nearly eighty percent for the fiscal, for the first half of fiscal year twenty-four. Delays in registration caused serious ramifications for our nonprofit human service providers. What are some of the factors that led to this nearly eighty percent of late contract registrations for the first half of twenty-twenty-four? And if you believe that there is disagreement in the data that's being used, can you help us shed light on that as well, so that we can have a greater understanding holistically of what's happening?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Chair Juan. So as it relates to the findings in the report for FY twenty-four, which was proposed as findings for the first half of FY twenty-four, we did not find the data or the contract information online to support the backup for that. So we can't specifically speak to how they came to those numbers. I will say that while they did sort of have an alarming tagline in that report, when we looked further at additional charts within their own report, we found even within their report, looking at, I think it was Table one-oh-six, there was, their data actually showed from that table that it was over fifty percent of FY twenty-four contracts were registered within the thirty days. But as you know, as I've mentioned earlier, according to our data, we, again, submitted over eighty-one percent of those contracts to the Controller before July first, and we were well past ninety-eight percent by the end of the summer. And according to the PBB rules, sort of the way that we look at timeliness is within sort of a thirty-day period of submission to the Controller, assuming that the contract will be registered and that payments can flow quickly. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we also have the ability, you know, once a contract is registered, for twenty-five percent of advance to be issued. And so that registration and submission on time is important. So happy, again, as I said earlier, and look forward to digging into those numbers where they're available in order to see where the discrepancies are. But I think where the discrepancy, you know, doesn't lay is that we are both committed, both of our offices, into ensuring that we're paying our nonprofits on time.
So with the numbers aside, for the delay in payments, could you- So with the numbers aside, for the delay in payments, could you help us understand what is causing the delay in payments? Just as a fact, what is the delay?
Uh, so putting aside the, uh, Controller Report, uh, which I, I don't believe necessarily had, uh, findings on payments, but on submissions and registrations, um, we, we, uh, track, as you know, uh, our, uh, cycle time on payments of invoices. And we significantly are under the 30 days of payments on submitted invoices. We have been, uh, for, for quite some time, both in Accelerator, um, and in Passport. Uh, to date with the invoices, uh, that are in, contracts that are invoisable within Passport since the migration, we've already paid out over $1.7 billion on those contracts. And they are, the, the timeline from submission of an invoice to payment is well below the 30 days of payment, uh, in the PBB rules.
Okay. One more thing to add to, uh, I think when we hear about delays in payments, um, one of the common trends we hear is that it's, it's on the, uh, council discretionary awards, which are retroactive by nature. They get, um, allocated on the day the contract term starts. So that's where we think, we're in year one now, but we implemented the multi-year discretionary reform, which is going to substantially ease that pain starting next year. Uh, for no longer having to go through the entire procurement process when you get those, uh, awards allocated through Schedule C. You're just, it just goes straight into that contract and you don't have to go through the entire process again. That's a common pain point that we hear about and I think where we see, uh, good progress ahead.
Well, we are happy to have partnered with you and the Controller's Office to make, make discretionary funds that are multi-year. And I want to make it clear, like, the emails that I'm getting from nonprofits that I follow up with you and, um, Director Flores on are not for discretionary funding for like $10,000 from the city council. It's for like millions of dollars with the mayor's agencies. So the delays in payments that they're really, really banking on, especially when they're about to close doors as nonprofits, are in the millions with city agencies like Mock J or DYCD or DIFTA. So we want to understand for each city agency, from your bird's eye view, what do you think is causing these delay in payments or is it just too vast and, and a variety of multitude of reasons that it's kind of hard to prescribe as one issue for delay?
Well, I think, um, Chair Juan, the, the procurement system overall, as we founded, as you know, from day one, we were the first to admit, uh, you know, is, is broken. And, uh, we, we, which is why we've been approaching, uh, reform in a really holistic way. Um, because there are a multitude of issues. Um, but it's really about fixing the ecosystem of our procurement system and changing legislation, changing rules and regulations, updating and continuing to iterate, um, our technology tool in order to have, uh, a more efficient process. Um, and also it's really all about people, right? So, uh, part of the, part of the process is not only, you know, you build it and they will come, but what are you providing to our, to our sector to ensure that they know how to navigate the process? Uh, which is why we have really invested, um, you know, our, our, our commitment and intentionality in, uh, issuing webinars, as I said, that we launched last year. Um, that was extremely popular and we continue to, uh, build curriculum around those getting started webinars. As you know, uh, Chair Juan, you know, we, we're all about actually getting out there where vendors are um, and answering those questions, the hard questions, the easy questions and the ones that we have to follow up on. And then iterating our, our response in terms of what tools we're providing. And so it, it is a holistic approach. It's not just one thing. I will, I will say it is, it is a thousand percent, as you know, Chair Juan, um, my personal mission that this is going to be a better, uh, system, uh, overall, uh, when we're, when I'm done, right? And when all of us are done. And so, uh, we obviously want to ensure that there are less of those high priority calls where someone's stuck and they're owed, they're owed money. Uh, but we also need to, to make sure that we're doing that in, in a partnership. And so we continue, uh, to look forward to having, uh, dialogue around things that may not be on our roadmap yet that we need to continue to work on to make this a better process.
Okay. And Moxon, your neighborhood was very successful, especially in my district. There were hundreds of people there. So thank you for hosting that. And I look forward to continuing to support you and, um, the city agencies to get this done for human service providers. Uh, my next question is on June 2023, a performance management and transparency reporting system or a dashboard was called, uh, called Contractstat was scheduled to be launched. And I understand that it still has not been launched. What is the delay in the initiation of the system? Why hasn't it been launched? And well, when do you see it scheduled to be launched on time? Since we talked about, um, the other systems for Passport like Document Vault coming on in the end of this calendar year. So we would love to know the schedule when that will be coming online.
Thank you, uh, Chair Juan. As I mentioned in my, my testimony, uh, we actually have, uh, launched, uh, Contractstat. It is an important performance tool. Uh, as you know, it was one of the recommendations of the task force. Uh, the final recommendations of the task force and, uh, sort of plans forward for implementation were approved by the steering committee of that task force, um, which included the Controller's Office. And we have had two sessions thus far with agency leadership, with commissioners and city hall. Um, and we're looking forward to, in the near future, expanding, um, availability to Contractstat. But it's, it is, uh, in use as a performance management tool. We're really excited about it. Um, and we're already looking to iterate and again, uh, working closely with our partners at Mons and hopefully in the near future, expanding the audience for that as well.
Okay. I look forward to having a tutorial of, or a demo of that tool now that it's live. For multi-year contracts going back, in the summer of 2023, the mayor's office and the controller announced the new reform to discretionary contracts. Instead of nonprofits needing to register a contract every year, the reform would allow nonprofits to begin multi-year contracts without needing to complete the entire procurement annually. This new process is supposed to make it easier for nonprofits to get paid and hopefully decrease the number of late registrations. How has this transition been to the new multi-year format and what issues or concerns have risen during this transition?
Uh, thank you, Chair Juan. Um, a- as you know, when we were in discussions around finalizing, uh, this initiative and an announcement with, with council, uh, we talked about, and I think you and other, uh, council members, uh, uh, raised, uh, concerns around, uh, communication, right? So that was the one thing that we really wanted to make sure that we were communicating, uh, accurately and often, um, early and often to our providers and to our agencies, which we have been, uh, doing, uh, since we announced, uh, announced this great initiative of multi-year discretionary contracts. Where we are now, and as, um, Deputy Chief of Staff Matt Sullivan mentioned, the, we expect that the savings in time are going to be in the out years. Uh, obviously they're, they're going to be registered, as you know, as three-year contracts. And if a contract, a potential provider is in fact awarded a city council discretionary contract in the out years, they will be able to tap into that multi-year contract. So we've already worked with our agencies to, uh, load over 1,700 of those, uh, contract shells in our passport system and are working closely with our agencies to move through the process of registration for those initial multi-year contracts as city council, uh, contracts be, are being cleared through that normal process. So, uh, look forward to coming back to giving you an update. And as I said, I think the, uh, we're in year one, uh, but in year two is where we, and year three where we anticipate seeing major savings.
Have you heard any feedback from the city agencies on this new process?
Um, yes, Councilman, uh, Chair Juan, as I mentioned, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we were communicating, um, early and often. So, uh, our agencies were both excited, uh, when we first announced it. And we've provided, uh, uh, multitude of training multiple times to our agencies to ensure that they have all of the tools they need to implement this correctly um, and addressing any, uh, questions that they may have had for us after the initial announcement in our trainings and iterating on those trainings. But everyone's excited about, about it. And again, I think, uh, year one will be, uh, the heavy lift. And then year two and three is where we're going to see, uh, really great savings.
You know, I love anything that makes people feel excited about contracts. So that's great news.
Speaking my love language, Chair Juan.
So it's safe to say that we expect this to expedite the registration and reimbursement of the process?
Absolutely. As, as you may recall, you know, our estimates were, were hopefully in year two and three that it would shave off at least six months to the normal process because that contract would already be in place and would just follow, uh, the normal budget process. As Deputy, uh, Chief of Staff Matt Sullivan mentioned earlier, since the allocations of those particular awards and dollar value, and dollar amounts and to the specific nonprofits will still follow the council's process at the budget, beginning of the budget year. Uh, but being able to have those contracts in place ahead of time, uh, will, will be a game changer.
Thank you. Then for human service contracts, we've heard from providers that it takes, it can take them up to four years to register. Can you help me understand why it's taking them up to four years to register and why this is happening and what we're doing to address it?
Chair Juan, is that a specific procurement method? I, four years is, is nothing I ever heard. Uh, that's, that's definitely an outlier and would, uh, be happy to get that contract information from you and your staff afterwards.
Okay. We will follow up one, uh, we're going to investigate, um, where that question comes from. Okay. I think my baby and I are ready to go home. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Juan.
For your diligence and for asking us these questions. We're going to close out this portion of the hearing and we're going to move into testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
With any other questions. Thank you. And we're going to take a short, uh, five-minute break.
Can you provide the most recent block of the organization data from the new RBC breakdown by girl? Yes, thank you. My promise has been terrific. The program, we appreciate the council's support and the mayor's support of it. Um, the, there's not money in fiscal year 25 at this point, but know that there's going to be ongoing conversations about that. Um, there are, I'll walk you through, uh, the numbers of, of enrollment in the Bronx. There's 123 children enrolled. Manhattan, 109. New York, 197. Queens, 204. Torneos, 130. Children have been newly enrolled this year. About 630 who are enrolled, um, at all. So EDF, the budget includes 3.1 million in fiscal 2024 and 3.4 million in fiscal 2025. What do you need if you have a speaker, um, or a spot member? What if it's 234 and are any of the services in contract, if it's filled out much, into which group and what works that are within? So this is, uh, Children's Aid, it's a successful, uh, program for families, um, relocation program that, um, we've been funding through, uh, ACS, about $800,000. Um, there's one staff member at the asylum seeker operation that's state funded when it comes through ACS. Um, and then we have been working on translation through, uh, Accurate. Um, so the money has been for those activities. Um, so maybe some of the, the, the contract that I'm, so you don't have positions that are in the EDF, uh, or no. And then we have been working on translation through, uh, Accurate. Um, so the money has been for those activities. Um, so maybe some of the, the, the contract that I'm, so you don't have positions that are in the EDF, uh, or no. The part, the part, the budget includes the baseline, 1.4 million starting in fiscal 2025 with the family service unit. So this statement is also included in the baseline, it can reduce the 20 positions starting in fiscal 2025. What programs and services does this relate to and how is the reduction amount determined? And how will this impact services and programs of the family? So this is related to the family service, the service units are job type specialists who are responsible for working with families during their quarter supervision. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we have dramatically reduced the use of quarter supervision. And so, um, we took vacancies from those units and are just not going to fill them. And so that's where that, that cost came from. I think this is consistent with our priorities and consists with our values and one of the places where we think it's an element of our breakout. And if our plan include a backup, um, 10, 10.1 million in fiscal 2024, 5.2 million in fiscal 25, and 5.4 million, and how can we leave it out of the main card? Can you explain with the same, I believe, and how were those, how was determined? And is this a complete elimination program that the EDF, uh, has, uh, located? So these are, uh, programs operating through public schools. These are placements that, uh, families have, uh, that, uh, they have through the Department of Education. Um, and so children are placed in these schools. And money comes through the, the local social services that you have, that happens to the ACS in this case. So it's simply a reestimate of the number of students who are, uh, evaluating those services. The PMM mark shows that there's been a steady decline in number of family entrant, child, or, or preventative services in fiscal 2021. There would be 137 families dropping to, family in fiscal 2022, or further to 659. Look back to the list, it's a recap, family entrant, defensive services, and, and, uh, starting, starting with COVID. Uh, and then associated workforce issues that have, um, gone on. So I'm better. We're really, really pleased with the mayor's announcement last week about investments in, uh, in the workforce. And that, and the primary reason, uh, we have seen over the last three months, a restart, an increase about over 20%. Uh, families newly coming to preventative services. And as I mentioned earlier, we're pleased that, that increase is primarily being carried by community referrals, not by job dependent referrals. Previous year, EDF had fully planned the increase of our family enrichment center, 235, 525. Um, I believe we talked about it a little bit in the year opening, um, Um, how many have moved up to eight in the month? Can you give, they'll bring that by Earl? Eight or twelve were open. There are four in the Bronx. There are three in Brooklyn. Two in Manhattan. Two in Queens and one in Step Out. Um, eight additional providers have contracts past since last year. And they're going through the process of engaging community, making space with community, deciding on the name. Um, and deciding what offerings will be there. Two of those are in Bronx. Uh, two are in Brooklyn, one in Manhattan, and three in Queens. And then we just made recommended awards uh in the last month to two more in the Bronx. Three in Brooklyn, two in Manhattan, and two in Queens. And I know that um part of what the enrichment centers has been a lot of communication around having engagement. But what engagements are you doing with local, like my company, Calver? Just so that we can be a part of the planning and opening process. Yeah, I think that sort of the, what's really important is um we want to make sure that the family enrichment centers are um clearly distinct from uh job protection, from things that anybody would be concerned to, to go towards. Um, so providers in each community that are selected do that engagement. They name a local mayor advisory committee and develop those relationships. The mayor is determined um a lot of the community outreach. They have an advisory board that gets elected. Many of them reach out to their council member community boards. If that didn't happen in this instance, we will make sure it gets fixed. Um, but it's really important that they have a broad engagement of, of um the entire community. I was reaching out for a rockaway, beautiful new opening. Um, and very, very robust engagement from elected to local community. Um, and we want to make sure that happens each time. Yeah, I definitely want to be sure that happens as well. So definitely want to be able to talk offline and brainstorm about it. And I know the council will reach out to us a lot, and we should have to do that. Um, the PMR shows the increase in number of care cases, care cases, which went from 545 in fiscal 2022 to 835. If 835, 887 in fiscal 2023, a decrease of 54.4%. So the first one was in the full year, 2024. Those, there were 288, 200, 284 cases, up 46.2%. When compared to the main period in fiscal 2023, one in, when there was only 138, 501,924 cases. What is contributing to the considerable increase in care cases and how does care change different from the traditional child protective cases? Because EPF has a standard, mainly self-care system to cover more than 444. And so what is the timeline, how much is the increase in EPD? So we are, this is um about diverting cases from the traditional job protective investigation, which is um relatively flat. But we're very excited about the decrease in reports from public schools based on the new training and the accessing family supports. So this has been very intentional. It's up 10 times since 2017. We went the last year from 48 units to 64 units. Uh, these are dedicated units using the CARES approach. Um, so we're about 25% one in four responses to a job protective, an SCR call, I should say, are using the CARES approach. We're currently evaluating how much harder to go there. Um, it's very important that we distinguish though that we don't want people calling. Uh, the state's in direct stream to get them. We want a CARES approach and we can provide that support in a cooperative service or a community-based service. Um, this is just a way to make sure that we're reducing uh the number of families getting unnecessary indication of child out treatment, which can have like bring effects, as you know. Uh, and we're really thrilled that the work done at CARES is um sort of deeply embedded in good social work principles and practices. Yeah, um, and I think, even for me, I mean, I've got one of the.
We'll now open the hearing to public testimony. Uh, we'll remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public must remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak today, please fill out an appearance card with sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, the mayor's Office of Contract Services preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I'll now call the first panel. Michelle Jackson, Julian Falcone, Ariane Cruz, Kieran Pauls, and Sarah Batu. Please come to the dais. You can start when ready.
Good afternoon. Okay, good. I did the mic on. That's the first step. Good afternoon, Chair Wan. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm Michelle Jackson, the executive director of the Human Services Council. And, you know, I get to testify with good news, which is a really nice change of pace for how I typically show up. We're really, really grateful to the administration and to the council, especially Chair Wan, council member Brewer, Althea Stevens, and others from this committee in particular, who've really pushed for a cost of living adjustment and to recognize the important work of human services workers. The multi-year investment for the cost of living adjustment will increase salaries for human services workers doing some of the most essential work in our communities, 9% over the next three years. And on top of the workforce enhancement funding, um, is really one of the biggest investments in the human services workforce. So we're really grateful to come to this budget season with good news. Um, and to just really want to thank the council and the administration for their leadership in really reversing decades of divestment in human services and, in human services workers. But how long will they have to wait for this money? And um, you know, the impact on contracts on a daily basis around lateness is certainly um a continuing concern. We really appreciate Director Flores and her team. They are really responsive as the MOX team. Lisa has been an essential partner in the nonprofit sector, in advancing Passport, in clearing the backlog. And so we really have the right leadership. Um, but we still worry, and there's still perpetual contracting issues, as the chair has really pointed out. Particularly, you know, the Joint Task Force to get nonprofits paid on time took a great effort in creating substantial reforms and really clearing the backlog. Unfortunately, that backlog has begun again. According to the Comptroller's annual summary, contract reports for FY23, over 72% of human services contracts were registered late. For too-long nonprofits, similar to the divestment, this isn't one administration. This is, you know, they inherited a backlog of $6 billion that they had to clear up. And it's something that we really still see perpetuating. In addition, the indirect cost rate, the workforce enhancement money has been slow to go out. And so while we really take a moment to celebrate the victory of the cost of living adjustment, we still want to make sure that providers, workers are going to rely on that money as of July 1. And if providers don't have that money in their bank accounts, it's going to be hard for them to pass that on on July 1. So we really appreciate your attention to this issue and again, for championing human services organizations and workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Michelle. I just had, um, I just have a few questions. So we just asked on the record to Director Flores on details on how this is going to be implemented or administered, and we got no answers. From your conversations um with the city, are you getting any clarification on how we're going to implement this July 1? As you said, how important it is?
Yeah, so I'm meeting with OMB next week. Um, and we certainly have a series of questions from our members, as you can imagine. I'm sure your office are already getting similar questions. Our understanding of a COLA, um, in, you know, there's been multiple COLAs throughout the course of, of my time at HSE and before, is COLAs are typically baselined. We were told that this will function as a typical cost of living adjustment, which means that providers can rely on the 3% each year, that it compounds, which means that it is baselined. And I am making assumptions um here myself, so just put, you know, put that out there. But it's a traditional cost of living adjustment. And unless they vary wildly from their predecessors, um, when they've done them, it will be baselined into contracts. And we'll have some outliers in terms of, you know, what if you enter into a new contract in year two of the COLA? Who, you know, and those are questions that we're looking to get answered. But um, from the conversations I've had, OMB and MOX is really open to facilitating this conversation and making sure we get those questions answered.
Then from, from what we just discussed now with the new multi-year contracts, has there been open discussion on how that's going to be impacted for multi-year contracts that exist with the new COLA?
So that, that's definitely one of the, so multi-year contracts have always existed in like the competitive RFP procurements. And so typically, well, so any contracts that are currently in the renewal process or are contracted with should be impacted by the COLA. What we've heard from OMB is that it's every contract that got also the workforce enhancement funding. So our hope at Human Services Council is to give an FAQ to both the council and to our members about who's covered and how long. And then we'll get some of those answers around, you know, discretionary is not included. They've never really, they've never, those contracts have never been included in a cost of living adjustment. Um, but it really will, this COLA will cover the, um, you know, the, the large swath of human service contracts, competitive contracts with the city.
Okay, any way that we can support while you are figuring out how to implement now that the negotiation is done? Please let us know, and you have all of us that have your back.
Absolutely. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next testimony, please.
Good after, oh. Good afternoon, Chair Wan and esteemed members of the Committee on Contracts. My name is Ariane Cruz. I'm manager of public policy and collaboration at philanthropy New York, also known as PNY. Um, we are submitting testimony to strongly support the streamlining of New York City's nonprofit contracting process. We applaud the city council's leadership in securing the recent COLA increase for human service workers. Um, after years of advocacy by my colleagues in the, in the room and of Michelle at Human Services Council. However, PNY believes that further progress can be made by simplifying and reducing unnecessary bureaucratic burdens imposed by city agencies on nonprofit organizations. PNY represents grantmakers investing nearly $7 billion in New York City. We believe smoother contracting process as outlined in the Center for Urban Futures 2023 report would ensure efficient use of vital government and philanthropic funds for critical services. Delayed payments and stalled contracts are devastating for nonprofits. As you will hear today and have heard, um, many have been forced to lay off staff, cut services, or even close their doors. This creates a crucial gap in essential services, especially during challenging times. PNY actively works to champion a stronger nonprofit sector. We believe timely contracting registration and payments are vital to this. Late payments force philanthropy to act as a backstop hindering investments in strengthening and innovating services. PNY urges the committee to prioritize recommendations for a more efficient and equitable contracting process to get nonprofits paid in full and on time. This will empower nonprofits to focus on their core mission, serving all New Yorkers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi there. JT Falcone, United Neighborhood Houses. Thank you, Chair Wan, for coming in today with a four-week-old. Uh, really appreciate your presence here. And uh, I, I gotta start, feels a little different sitting here this year, Michelle. Um, it's, it's really, uh, we're still on the heels of a very exciting early announcement this week uh for the, for the COLA. And it couldn't have happened without HSE's leadership, without the council uh fully embracing this and, and really working to fight to make sure that human service workers get a COLA. At, you know, Neighborhood Houses, we're tremendously excited about this development. And also, we know that it's coming after way too many years. So in the true spirit of advocates, we're thinking about what comes next and how we keep fighting together. We'll get there. Right now, congratulations. This is really exciting. It's, it's a, it's an exciting budget. Um, and Chair Wan, I just, I wanted to pull towards Passport, the transition. You, you asked a couple of really good questions earlier. I think your head's in the right spot. And I just, we wanted to highlight in making sure that MOX has the resources that they need to run that through. There have been a number of issues that come up. I think, Michelle, you noted that as, as the issues come up, MOX is responsive. Uh, but it doesn't seem that they always have the resource that they need to address the issues as quickly as possible. Because when you're dealing with tech, um, you know, it's not necessarily someone in-house that's solving the problem. So just making sure that uh MOX has those resources that they're asking for in the budget. That's, that's the big thing around um the budget this year outside of the big win.
Thank you so much. If you have specific technical issues that you want addressed, or some sort of processing issue that you see in Passport that you've already requested be changed and you're not seeing that, or you don't see it in future implementations, please let my office know and I'll follow up directly and we'll make sure that those changes are made.
Yeah, we definitely will. I mean, I think usually what happens is MOX is very quick to respond and say, hey, we see this, hey, we're on top of it. And then it's, it's not always that the issue can be solved right away. And, and we know that MOX is working on it, but happy to flag for your office if it's helpful.
Yeah, because at least if you let us know as well, because they're not really sharing like, hey, these are what the nonprofits are upset about with us. There's, they're not telling us that. But if, at least if you're telling both of us, or see, seeing me in these emails, um, and my team, my committee staff, then we can keep track of it and we can continue to ask on the record in future hearings to say, hey, four hearings ago in this quarter, you told us XYZ, we're still not seeing this implemented, what is happening? And at least we can continue to pressure them publicly to make sure that those changes are made timely, in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Carrie Anne Pauls, and I'm the director of coalitions and resource management at Take Root Justice. And thank you so much for your oversight, Chair Wan, and congratulations again on having a new baby. Um, Take Root is an organization that helps coordinate several citywide coalitions that receive city contracts, such as Stabilizing NYC, that is a discretionary contract. The LEAP Coalition's work under the Anti-Harassment Tenant Protection Program. And the Silix work for the IOI contract. And so we have a front row seat in the ongoing contracting problems, both discretionary and baseline. Um, we were here last year and testified about all the contracting issues. And we do appreciate some of the movement and changes that MOX and other contracting agencies are trying to make. And yet, I want to say today, we are in the same position as we were last year when we were here. For the Stabilizing NYC Coalition, our fiscal year 23 contracts for the full coalition have still not been registered with HPD. And thus, obviously, our fiscal year 24 contracts are also not registered. So when you heard MOX say, like, we are moving things on time, like, we, we don't even have this fiscal year's contracts moving on time. And you know what that means for us, the constant cash flow issues, having to take out expensive loans, not knowing if we are able to make payroll. So um, so yeah, the seriousness of this oversight, we really appreciate you looking into this. Also, around the returnable grants funds and streamlining those, several of our organizations have applied for them. And, and they aren't immediate lifesavers. They, they take several months to apply, to be processed, and some of them are still pending. And so really would love a push on having those actually be streamlined and not in just a performative way. Um, and I want to talk a little bit about the COLA increase, which is so exciting to hear. But we're hugely concerned about this being pushed through the workforce enhancement initiative because our experience with those increases were that subcontracting programmatic services could not receive any of those increases. Thus, the COLA increase only made it to the lead agencies and barring all the programmatic staff doing the same work as the lead agencies, not receiving any of that personal, um, personal services raises. So just a recommendation, and others will submit in written testimony, really appreciate it. But just a huge concern and, and, and push that these COLA increases be implemented in a very different way. Thank you so much.
Hey, duly noted.
Good afternoon, Chair Wan. My name is Sarah Batu, and I'm the director of programs at Fifth Avenue Committee. We're a 46-year-old nonprofit comprehensive community development corporation based in South Brooklyn, whose mission is to advance economic, social, and racial justice in New York City. I'm testifying on behalf of Fifth Avenue Committee as well as our affiliate organization, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Just to give a little context, FAC and NHN have a combined annual budget of nearly $12 million. And we rely on city funding from many agencies to do our transformational services, which include adult education, financial counseling, entitlements access, benefits access, organizing advocacy, tenant eviction prevention services, and housing counseling. I want to echo a lot of what my colleagues on the panel have said today. But I also want to provide you with a few specific numbers from the standpoint of a CBO organization like us. FAC and NHN are in the majority of stabilizing NYC contractors who have unregistered contracts for FY24 and FY23, as Carrie Anne said. We have not been able to draw down the $640,000 in contracts we were awarded for critical work we have already completed to keep rent-stabilized tenants in their homes. work we have already completed to keep rent-stabilized tenants in their homes. Furthermore, NHN and FAC are contractors on other unregistered contracts for FY '23 and FY '24 with HPD, including community housing preservation services, foreclosure prevention programs, and a greener NYC. Collectively, we have over $1.1 million in unregistered contracts sitting with HPD in the final review stage. Unfortunately, these delays are systemic and they extend beyond HPD. Currently, we have multiple DYCD contracts across FY '23 and FY '24 that remain unregistered. These contracts total nearly $620,000. Retirement of DYCD staff and delays in replacing them, as well as the transition from HHS Accelerator to Passport, are factors contributing to these lengthy delays. While we appreciate the bundling of discretionary contracts that's now happening, it's also creating potentially some delays that slow down contract registrations. I just want to emphasize that we have never waited this long to register contracts. Waiting until the next fiscal year is a significant hardship for us. FAC is now borrowing over $700,000 from our line of credit at 8% interest. That's very unsustainable. We urge the city to immediately register these contracts. Furthermore, the city is effectively borrowing money from community-based nonprofit organizations at 0% interest with no incentives to register contracts quickly. Nonprofits cannot be a bank to the city of New York. We urge the council to create deadlines for steps in the process and to consider implementing interest payments, which is what the state is doing currently. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this testimony and congratulations to your new addition to your family.
Thank you so much for testifying. You know, it's just so confusing to me when I ask the questions of what's causing the delays in registration or in payment? And then they look, they're like, what do you mean, four years? That's impossible. Then I just feel gaslit. So I think we have to figure out what's happening. Like, that's clearly not what's hap, what is happening on the ground, but that's, it's being minimized or denied by the administration and the agency. So I think we just have to do more digging and have more conversations offline and in person. So I think the, because right now I have a number of nonprofits that come to us regularly saying like, our registration is delayed or our payments are delayed. And then we, as I said during the hearing, I bring it back to Lisa and her team to have those resolved. But I know that there's so much more than the ones that are, that are in my purview. And the more, I think, people just email it to us and we can start to collect the data because clearly there's either denial or there is some sort of gap where maybe for certain agencies, Mox may not see the delay themselves. And then they have this weird ping pong going on with the controller's office about apples and oranges comparisons, et cetera. And they don't seem as, they get more defensive with the reports from the controller's office than trying to have constructive feedback and trying to make amendments to, and reforms to how we work. So I think we just have to work together more to collect this information and, and confront it head-on. So if you could feel free to email us and CC us on anything that you follow up with Mox, I think it'll help us in the long run.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your testimony.
I'll now call up the next panel. Lauren Siciliano, Wesley Canes, Lisa Rivera, Greg Clemm, apologies if I mispronounced that one, and then David Tram. Again, apologies if I mispronounced that one.
I will tell them they all pronounce, I mean, they all say that Michelle delayed.
Okay.
Yes.
You can begin when ready.
Begin.
Feel free to begin when ready.
Okay. Great. Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Siciliano. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at the Legal Aid Society. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. We were also here last year and appreciate your continued advocacy on these issues. I'm here along with my co-panelists today to speak to you about issues that the criminal, civil, and family legal service providers in New York City are facing. We are a lifeline for New Yorkers in need. Collectively, we provide constitutionally, legally mandated representation to hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers each year. We defend people against incarceration, deportation, eviction, and family separation, and we connect people to life-saving benefits. The services we provide are supported by city initiatives and funding. Without these funds, we cannot do our work. We are grateful to the city and the council for their ongoing commitment to our work and for the recently announced 3% COLAs. We are proud providers of many of New York City's hallmark initiatives and programming like Right to Counsel and Housing Court, the New York Immigrant Family Unity Project, and interdisciplinary criminal and parental representation. Despite these investments, legal services providers have reached a tipping point and our programs and operations are in jeopardy. Simply put, the city's system of funding and contracting with nonprofit providers is broken, but it can be fixed. This is so critically important, as we know you know, because without a registered contract or, or extension, or an effective payment process, the city is not able to pay providers for the work we complete, revenue that we rely on to meet payroll and pay for healthcare, rent, and other essential needs. And when we can't receive payment from the city, we continue to pay our staff and provide services, even though we can't access the funds. Providers like us start at an extraordinary disadvantage. While city agencies receive additional funding for collective bargaining increases, healthcare cost increases, and rent increases, providers like us do not. This means that when baseline contracts remain flat, our funding is effectively cut. And then, when payments are delayed and we therefore can't spend all the funds in a single year because we don't know how much we will receive, or we can't front the money, the city keeps whatever we don't spend, effectively cutting our funding even further. I will now pass it to my colleagues to discuss these critical issues in more detail.
Hi. My name is David Ruin. I am the CFO of Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A. The contracting crisis begins with the city's Request for Proposals Process, or RFP. Despite having ample time of notice when, of when a contract term is set to expire, the city routinely fails to issue RFPs in a timely manner. Without knowing whether our contracts will be renewed, for how long, for how much, and for what services, it is nearly impossible to function. While the city can and does extend existing contracts through the negotiated acquisition extension process, or NAE, these extensions only last for a maximum of one year and do little to mitigate the problem. Furthermore, the city often delays the issuance of even the NAE, adding to the instability felt by providers approaching a potential loss of funding and staffing as a result. Even once an award has been made, it can take months to get the new contract or amendment issued and registered. This creates a gap in funding that we are forced to try to fill using other limited dollars or high-interest loans so that we can make payroll. When the city forces us to front costs before a contract is registered, the provider makes what is in effect an interest-free loan to the city. If and when we can't fill that gap, these delays amount to, in effect, a covert cut in funding as providers must leave money on the table because they cannot front funding in anticipation of city disbursements. For example, for contracts that expire on June 30th, 2024, the RFP for continued funding for these programs were due December 1st, 2023, yet the new contracts have not been negotiated. The terms of these contracts have historically undergone a long negotiation process, with last year's NAE alone taking over three months to complete. To ensure timely registration and payment for contracts at this late stage, the city must work with providers to enter into contract extensions for fiscal year '25 now and complete before the end of June. We ask for your support for the immediate implementation and registration of extensions for any contract, expiring contracts that are not executed for fiscal year '25 so that providers can be prepaid, can be paid for work they complete beginning July 1st.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Reefer and I'm the President and CEO of the New York Legal Assistance Group, otherwise known as NILAG. To follow my colleagues' testimonies about chronic underfunding of legal services and obstacles that we face and what funding actually exists, I'm going to speak about the issues that remain in the contract amendment process and how they impact our organizations. First, even though fiscal year '23 ended on June 30th, many providers either didn't receive confirmation of their indirect cost rate amendment funding until late last year or they have yet to receive any information at all. ICR was a major city initiative that we applaud, and it provides critical funding to cover our administrative costs and keep our organizations running. Delayed confirmation process really poses real obstacles for our organizations in planning, operational capacity, and our effective running of our organizations. Second, similar challenges also occur when any additional funding is announced late in the year. So for example, while we were really pleased about the Workforce Enhancement Initiative expansion for fiscal year '24, we didn't receive notice of the expansion until February, eight months after the start of the fiscal year. Moreover, some providers still haven't received confirmation of the amount of we funding that they will receive on their contracts, therefore undermining the very purpose of this initiative and for us to infuse dollars into our budgets to help staff salaries. Without any notice of which contracts will receive this enhancement, the specific amounts, payment timelines, it's nearly impossible for us as providers to effectively use this funding, if at all. And it's worth mentioning, as you know, that the city will keep what we don't spend. And as my colleague said, that is an effective cut to our budgets. We also included in our written testimony more examples of the restrictions and obstacles that we faced during the contract amendment process. But suffice to say that there is a lack of clarity, combined with consistent delays, that make it extremely difficult for providers to take advantage of funding in our contracts when it exists. And ultimately, what happens is that our dedicated staff and the communities that we serve pay the price. Thank you, and we look forward to answering any questions.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Clemm. I am the Chief Financial Officer at Legal Services NYC, otherwise known as LSNYC. So I'd like to talk to you about the invoicing and payment challenges we have been having, as well as the migration to Passport. So final registration of our contracts, which are often, as you heard, months and even years after the work has already been completed, does unfortunately not end the difficulties with receipt of payment. Indeed, it merely sets the stage for the next layer of challenges. This involves detailed line item reviews of invoices that we submit that require, that require pages of information and record keeping to meet detailed and often shifting requirements by the agencies. Once registered, budget modifications can often then take weeks or months to receive approval as costs and needs understandably shift throughout the course of the year. In addition, related to Passport, providers have had even greater challenges receiving payment due to the city's system change from HH Accelerator to Passport. For weeks to months, many providers could not submit invoices or receive payment for the services that were delivered. This has created enormous cash flow issues, putting in jeopardy our ability to pay our staff who actually deliver services on the ground. This has required extended borrowing on lines of credit and, and payment of related interest costs. And at some organizations, LSNYC in particular, the organization that I represent, obtaining advances from our other funders so that we can meet the obligations on city contracts and address cash flow challenges. Moreover, there was little to no communication to us from Mox as to when the invoicing issues were going to be addressed, which created further confusion and financial strain. There have been now changes to address many of these challenges, which included additional advances on our contracts. And we are great for those change, grateful for those changes, but there are unfortunately still some contracts that are not yet open for invoice submission. And so we are seeking some clear timelines on when those fixes will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Wesley Canes and I am the interim Executive Director at the Bronx Defenders. And I will be sharing some of the recommendations that myself and colleagues here are making to this committee. While this administration has committed to making substantial reforms to support nonprofits like us that provide essential services to millions of New Yorkers each year, these contracting issues directly undermine that effort by preventing timely payments to nonprofits for services delivered and threaten the ability of nonprofits to continue providing these critical services. We therefore submit the following recommendations. Before I, I name some of these recommendations, it's, it's important to also share that this hearing is happening with the backdrop of the state budget process playing out in Albany. And the governor has proposed to raid several funds which supports directly public defense. The council must lead on this issue and refuse to allow its own contracting system to get in the way of its constitutional obligations and further disconnect and marginalize New Yorkers from our life-saving services. We recommend an immediate extension of all expiring contracts. We simply cannot wait to execute the new fiscal year '25 contracts if we are to meet our fiscal obligations this year. We also ask that the, there be an increase to the advance, the advancement at the beginning of the fiscal year from 25% to 50%. Moving forward, we ask that you create a longer contract terms for baseline contracts and implement, implement several accountability and transparency measures like dashboards with detailed information so organizations can see exactly where they are in the process and clear timeframes for each step in the process. And finally, the city must cover the interests incurred on the loan and lines of credit that these nonprofits undertake. At a minimum, allow us to invoice the city for those expenses as part of these contracts. We have further recommendations in our written submissions and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, I am so grateful that you come and testify almost every single year. I think it's more than once a year when you come. And I'm so grateful because for, for the legal service providers, I see you guys as like Avengers of the city, like superheroes, where you're really helping a lot of folks in really dark situations. And we, like, I personally am so grateful. And I know we just worked with Legal Aid Society when my district had a really bad fire for 450 tenants were displaced. And you came with one phone call that, within a few hours, and you stayed with us all night at the Red Cross site to make sure that people knew what their legal rights were. And I know we've partnered with NILAG many times, or you've come to my district with your truck. And I know that with all the providers, you are doing really amazing work. And I am sorry for everything that you are dealing with and it is not okay. I just had, we have a few questions, but we're definitely going to take all your recommendations and we're going to submit them as legislative intros to see if we can work things that way. And we'll also start having conversations or revisit conversations that we've already had to make sure that we're following up on your concerns and your pain points. For one of the testimonies that we just heard earlier for the COLA, there was concern about it being part of the Workforce, Workforce and Force, Workforce Enhancement Initiative. Do you feel the same way about the COLA being part of the Workforce Enhancement Initiative for the way that it's going to be implemented?
I'll start and encourage my colleagues to add as well. I think it sort of depends on what the rules are. What we would seek is that the funding, one, be clear and, two, be as flexible as possible. Whether it's through the Workforce Enhancement Initiative or through the COLA Initiative, it's important that we have the flexibility to use the funding for staff salaries, that it cover as many contracts as it can, and that it be administered as flexibly and clearly as possible. Beyond that, I'm sort of agnostic, but I encourage others to add.
The one thing that I would add, but I agree with what Lauren just shared, is the Workforce Enhancement Initiative would have had a great impact in all of our organizations had we, had it been included in our budgets in June, July, August, or even September. February is when we received notice. And now we are forced to submit budgets for very restrictive rules about what we can, we IE can be used for. And it- restrictive rules about what we IE can be used for, and it sort of is against of what it was, the whole purpose was for, was to enhance salaries. I can't enhance a salary eight months into the fiscal year. It doesn't allow me that flex, and so we need flexibility for it to be other than that at this point and juncture. But if it's in the beginning of the fiscal year, we can plan and we can really raise salaries and really think this through for the betterment of all our organizations and our budgeting, but it doesn't allow us to actually appropriately budget for operational capacity or salaries if we don't know what it is, how it can be used, or when we will actually be given word to the actual amount that it will be, which there has not been a lot of clarity about that either. The other thing that I would add is that not all contracts that we receive from the city, even discretionary, we know that discretionary was not included in this, but even other baseline contracts are not included in this initiative too. And so when it's on some and not others, it really doesn't have the far-reaching impact that we were all hoping for.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and then we'll follow up if we have any other further questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll now call the next panel. Nicole McVignua, Lauren Schuster, Dan Lehman, Kristin Miller, Batally, I apologize, and then Janelle Ferris. Please come to the dais if your name's been called. Also, if you wish to testify today and you have not heard your name in person, please fill out one of these slips and hand it to the sergeant. Feel free to begin when ready.
Okay, great. Babies is upset as we are. Say it. Hi, I'm Kristin Miller. I'm the Executive Director of Homeless Services United. We're a member organization of nonprofits who provide homeless shelter and other services in New York City. What you've been hearing today, we echo, we are feeling. I think the question that you ask is very valid. If the city is reporting that they're registering contracts on time or that is improved, which we agree with, then what is the problem? If contracts are being registered sooner, why are members not getting paid? Why are organizations not getting paid? What we see is that we, as you know, have a very arduous, complex contract and budgeting process. So what we see every day, what we hear from our members, is that there's a breakdown of the multiple steps of the process. The first step is getting it registered. Most of it is still being registered late, right? Then, once your contract is registered, then you need to put in a budget amendment because months later, your budget has changed. Perhaps there was a peg like we had in September. That has to be reflected in the budget. That has to go through an approval process at the agency, right? When the budget is finally cleared, then you have to put in your back invoices, right? And there's been limits and restrictions on how many we can put in, how frequently, et cetera. Then, within DHS, we have an additional layer of the Form 65As, which is an approval form for getting subcontractors, vendors, approved. When we last heard in November, there was a three to four, sorry, four to 500 Form 65As backlog at DSS. Lastly, we have to get our payments EFT'd to us, right? So we're seeing that EFTs are hanging out there for a while. This affects staffing. It affects cash flow. I appreciated someone saying that they were owed 600,000. My members are owed 700 to $31 million. They are paying 20, 40,000 a month in interest alone. One paid $1 million last year in interest, for which there's no payback, right? I think, and then Passport has only, you know, accelerated, pun intended, on all of these issues. What do we need? We need to eliminate the backlog by the end of this fiscal year. We cannot continue into fiscal year 25 like this. We need improvements in the process so that we don't continually have a backlog. And lastly, people have talked about contracts actually paying for the cost of doing business, which it does not. I have to be very clear that my members are telling me that they are walking away from doing business with Department of Homeless Services. Experienced providers cannot afford to do business with the City of New York because it doesn't pay on time and it doesn't pay enough. So we ask the council to continue to support this. The Just Pay COLA was an immense win. Thank you, thank you. Our members still, though, don't have fiscal year 21, 22, or 20, I'm sorry, 22, 23, 24 workforce enhancement monies in their budgets. So it's still not in people's paychecks, right? It's, part of the process has started, but it's not finished. This is what we need your help with, so thank you very much.
So for the prior year enhancements, you never actually got paid for them, is what you're saying?
Right, so they've been, it's inconsistent. Some of my members do have their workforce enhancement money in their budgets, right? So, but many, many do not. And that means it's allocated to them, but the budget hasn't been approved, right? The budget amendment hasn't been approved, so they are not able to pass it on to their staff.
So the approval that they're waiting for is not from the council, though it's from OMB? Who's that approval from?
DHS, from the government.
From the agency itself.
Exactly. That's where we're seeing a tremendous backlog, and I will say that the shelter system has doubled in the last two years.
Yep.
But DHS, DSS staff has decreased about 18%. There's nobody at the ranch to process this stuff.
Yeah. Okay, so for, do you have faith that for the most recent COLA that you're going to be able to implement on July 1st?
No, we've been asking DSS for, to start the fiscal year 25 process, and we haven't gotten any direction yet.
Okay. Who are you working with on the council side to help you navigate this political process?
We've been talking to the General Welfare Committee, the Speaker's office, happy to work with you as well.
Okay, yes, please feel free to reach out to my office, and then we'll tag team with Diana Ayala and the Speaker and myself to make sure that Molly Park is at the table and giving you clear answers and that we're moving forward with this process.
Yep.
As well as backdating for the previous years that still have not moved.
Yeah.
We're so sorry.
No.
And thank you for all the work that you're doing.
You'll hear more from my members, and last thing I'll say is that we too see lots of people, you know, trying to close out fiscal year 21, issues with fiscal year 22. So I think there's just, there's so many, I think we've been focusing on the front, the very front first step, but there's a whole lot more that we need help with that really impacts our cash flow and the ability to do business. So I'll turn it to my colleagues.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Dan Lehman, President and CEO of Help USA. Help runs homeless shelters, homelessness prevention programs, and supportive housing services via contracts with Department for Homeless Services, the Human Resources Administration, and the Department for Health and Mental Hygiene. Prior to joining Help, I spent 15 years in city government at OMB, at DIFTA, at HRA, and as Deputy Commissioner for All Financing Contracting Functions at DOHMH. I was also the CFO and COO of Children's Aid, a large multi-services provider. Though contract and payment delays have been perennial problems, I have been struck by how much more severe and pervasive the pain now seems to be. Contract registrations and the expectation that providers will begin work well in advance of receiving full payment remain concerns, but as been referenced earlier, administrative processes and systems challenges have caused considerable pain as well. Delays in budget acceptance and modifications prevent timely reimbursement. The cumbersome 65A process for subcontractor approvals slows down critical goods and services. Contract advances may be significantly delayed and often are consumed by expenses already incurred. Budget cuts offset new funding, such as workforce enhancement initiative. The transition to Passport for contract management has been incredibly difficult, adding to an already fraught environment. These challenges impose real costs. To bridge cash needs, we have spent $236,000 on interest for our line of credit so far in fiscal '24. This is not covered by city contracts. Looking ahead to fiscal '25, we hope the recent three-year salary COLA will be implemented in a timely and efficient manner, including fringe benefits as well, and funding is maintained for prior new mandates like prevailing wage. A multi-year escalation for other-than-personnel services costs is desperately needed, as are fair indirect rates that are properly funded. The nonprofit providers the city depends on cannot be the city's bank as well. Problems with administrative processes and system implementations cannot be the basis for delayed payment. Contracts and cash flow are the lifeblood of this sector. Without addressing these pervasive problems, the best policy and program ideas will inevitably fail.
Thank you so much. I think what will be really helpful, the previous testimony group from the legal service providers, they provided a list of recommendations by category. For them, there are recommendations by delays, invoicing, payments, Passport, and I think if we could have that from you as well, it would really help us get organized and make it faster for us to process all of your recommendations, if that would be possible.
Yes, my written testimony was much longer and does include some recommendations. Thank you.
All right. I am sitting in the next chair. My name is Janelle Ferris, and I'm the President and CEO of Brooklyn Community Services. I want to express sincere gratitude for all that's happened this year to support nonprofits. $741 million is nothing to sneeze at. However, and there's always a however, you know, the New York City True Cost of Living Report, which just came out from the United Way, demonstrates that 50% of working-age New Yorkers are struggling, and they don't have incomes that cover their basic needs. Most of those people are people of color. Our staff is in that 50%, even with 9% increases, most of them will barely rise out of that. And so as we think for the future, as many of my colleagues and other presenters have said, thinking about how we might get closer to parity with salaries of our counterparts in government agencies who have the exact same titles, exact same credentials, and make 20,000 to 30,000 more. We also need to consider the procurement process itself. You've heard, and I have been hoo-hawing many of the people who have presented before about many of the things that are in my testimony, so I'm going to skip over some, but I'll tell you, BCS is waiting on money for a contract that started in 2021, ended in 2023, and we are now, we have paid millions to cover costs of our workforce and rent that will not be paid back anytime soon, and we're paying about $50,000 in interest each month. The other critical issue is the IRC rate. I just want to point out that it's a beautiful idea. We were all so happy when this initiative started, but what we're finding is agencies don't know how to access the pot, and if there is no money in it, we need to rethink the process. What we're finding is agencies are requiring us to put our indirect rate into the contract, thus lowering the amount of services that we can provide, or lower our indirect rate, which basically takes us right back to square one. We will only survive as a sector if we get paid the amount that it costs to do business. I hear you on the recommendations. I also heard you ask others, why are payments so late? Some of it relates just to training. Money that gets funneled through city agencies from federal government. If you don't have someone on staff who is trained to understand how the accounting practice of the federal government works, you'll affect agencies by not paying them for years. And we're seeing this again and again as agencies have lost staff and they don't have the ability to replace them quickly. It's a major problem, and I hope that we can work together to solve some of these issues.
Yes, thank you so much. For training, that's a really good point, because I know that when we talk to MOCs about training for Passport, even their newest system, there's no language access, and there isn't a lot of forethought for digital literacy as well. So we see a lot of gaps. Do you currently see any nonprofits who are doing the work of education and training? I know there's one, like, nonprofit Help Desk, but we get mixed reviews. Do any other nonprofits come to mind where they're specifically focused on training folks to do this work?
Most of us are figuring it out by reading computer and videos on YouTube. I will say that the training I'm talking about is in the city agencies themselves. Talking to people who have left the budgeting departments, young people say they're given a book and told, "Read this and you'll figure out how to validate invoices." That's not enough training, and that creates a backlog because they have to figure out for each line on an invoice, what can, or voucher, what can or cannot be paid, and it slows the system down.
Okay, so help me put into one sentence exactly what kind of training I need to request from MOCs.
To ensure that people who are processing vouchers are clear on what is approvable and what is not for each contract that they administrate.
Okay.
One more point.
And if I may, much of this, we're just talking about this training about the payment processes is actually outside the purview of MOCs. This is really about the individual agencies.
Been seen by DHS.
And their contract and finance functions. So I think that that's a key point here, that MOCs gets to the registration. After the registration, it's primarily in the hands of the agencies.
Yeah, and as you heard over and over again when we were asking questions even for migrant contracts, for the emergency contracts, there seems to be no real authority or jurisdiction for MOCs over these other agencies for the contracts that they administer, nor do they have insight, and that's one of the biggest pain points.
Yes, I think that's correct. We also, though, see, it's more like inconsistencies, discrepancies within, like, the ACOS, right? Like, so there's still a role of the ACOS, right? And that's where MOCs can be ensuring contract compliance through that way, and I think that's where there's, particular to my membership is within DSS, DHS is, my members have contracts with DHS, but the ACCO is within DSS, and we have a lot of hiccups, a lot of problems, a lot of delays as it gets passed back and forth between the different parts of DSS, right? And I don't think MOCs is aware of the severity of this ping-ponging, and other agencies might have one project manager for one organization's multitude of contracts. And other agencies might have one project manager for one organization's multitude of contracts. We have different contract managers. We have different program offices. We have different budget officers. So it's just around and around and around. And I think that's some of this training, where one part of the agency is saying one thing, and another part is saying something different, and we get ping-pong between. I just continually hear about the black hole. They submit paperwork, and it goes to the black hole. And they don't know, there's not a transparency in the process that it goes, "Here's step A, it should be 14 days. If you don't hear back in 14 days, then you approach this person. Then it's passed to this person." It doesn't exist. So, we would just ask for transparency, clarity, and internal training.
One more point, you know, without naming agencies' names, a set of programs outside of my work with homelessness, we do a lot. A set of programs was shifted from one agency to another. That was in 2019. What happened to any payments that hadn't been made by Agency One? New agency put in a drawer. And today, as we fight for our payments, they're telling us, "We just put those all in a drawer. We haven't looked at them since we got these programs." Requiring agencies who transfer things from one to another to continue to work on contracts that are a part of that transfer would be incredibly helpful.
Good afternoon, Chair Wong. My name is Nicole McViney, and I'm the Director of Policy at Urban Pathways, a nonprofit homeless services and supportive housing provider serving about 2,000 single adults each year. I would first like to thank the city council and the administration, as many have, for last week's announcement of a $741 million investment in city contracted human services workers. We commend the city for taking this critical step in addressing the underpayment of our essential workforce, and we look forward to seeing the positive impact that the stability of a guaranteed COLA over the next three years will have for our staff. And while we appreciate the efforts of the joint task force to get nonprofits paid on time, as you've heard, there continue to be delays in the contracting process and getting timely payments. In many instances, payments are made months or even years after services have been provided. Currently, Urban Pathways is owed almost $2 million by DHS. About half of this is reimbursements for services provided, and the other half is money paid to vendors for subcontracted services in both FY '24 and FY '23. In addition to payment delays, the 65A process for subcontractors that DSS contracted providers must adhere to is inefficient and lacks transparency. Approvals take an extensive amount of time, and if a submission is denied, there's no explanation as to why, what needs to be done to correct it, or how to proceed. And so I think this process really needs to be reevaluated and made more efficient. And while Urban Pathways contracts are currently registered, this has not always been the case. And we remain concerned that at just three months out from the start of FY '25, our contracts are not registered for the upcoming fiscal year. And this inability to depend on our contracts being registered on time leaves us uncertain of how to plan our organizational budgets, since late registration delays both, the late, sorry, late registration delays both advances that we receive on our contracts and also the ability to submit invoices for reimbursement. So we can't really plan ahead, and we really need to be able to rely on our contracts to be registered and paid on time in order to have a sustainable organization. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Schuster, the Vice President of Government Affairs at Urban Resource Institute. Thank you all, your team, and your beautiful baby for your patience today. We really appreciate you being here. Urban Resource Institute is the largest provider of transitional housing for survivors of domestic violence in the country, and we're a leading provider of transitional housing to families experiencing homelessness. You, I, and our partners, we were so thrilled with the COLA. After years of advocacy, this multi-year COLA will have a transformative impact on so many of our staff, the vast majority of whom are women and women of color. Thank you all for your support over the years of our efforts. But at the same time as we celebrate this COLA, you or I is owed tens of millions of dollars in reimbursements. And the typical reimbursement period can be anywhere from 75 days to a year or longer. We rely on lines of credit, as many other organizations have said, with steep interest rates, which impacts the cash that we have on hand to finance the life-saving interventions for our clients or to pay our staff. And it delays our payments to vendors. The migration to the Passport system has led to significant delays in the approval of budget modifications and contract amendments reflecting updated indirect rates. And transitioning to a new contracts management system should have been preceded by a significant investment in staff and client training. That investment must be made now so that we can reduce the delays going forward. And I would say that the delays that we're seeing now reflect the impact of previous rounds of budget cuts on, at the agency level, and headcount reductions. And we are seeing the impact of that now. As DV and homelessness increase, staff at the agency level is decreasing, and that is an untenable and unsustainable situation. We appreciate your partnership over the years and now, and your willingness to work with us. We will be submitting more detailed testimony with a series of recommendations that I think will echo most of what you've heard here today, and we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. I think the recommendations are really helpful when it's in writing, especially for my legislative team, so that we can start to explore how we can codify a lot of the recommendations that you're making. And it's just astounding, right? Because we're all sitting in this room where you had the MOCs theme, and they're like, "We're great, budget cuts, fine. We were doing great with like 170-something, and I guess we could go up to 180-something. It would be phenomenal." So, we're trying to understand. Yeah, if the coalition could combine the recommendations into one document, and especially if you could have it condensed in a short summary, so that way it's in bullet points, and that way we can start to review all of them, because it is going to be a lot of documents for my team to review.
Yeah, absolutely, we will do that. One thing that hasn't come up that I did want to say is that Ms. Flores was talking about advances. We were in this very bizarre situation where providers were eligible to get an additional advance for the Passport migration, knowing cash flow would be stalled a little bit. But some of my members were rejected because the city didn't think that they had spent up to 75% of their original advance. But they have spent it, as everybody is saying, they're working without getting paid. So the money has been spent but not encumbered. It's stuck somewhere in the multi-step process. So even though they were in dire cash flow situation, they did, they weren't able to get that second special advance. MOCs did tell us, like, if you have members who are in need of this, have them come to us. But I just want to note that technically she was right, that these were available, but many of our members were found ineligible because the money wasn't in the proper accounting moment. If that makes sense.
Okay. I mean, these all, all of these nuances are the reasons why we need to be connected with you so that in real time, as these conversations are happening, because I don't have the personal experience that you do, especially when it's agency specific. If you could even email us in real time, be like, Julie, you gotta rebut that statement with these answers or these further questions, or even with one of our committee team members, it'll help us have a more robust discussion with the agencies online and offline. So this is really helpful for us, which is why the partnership is so important. And then lastly, it's just astounding to me to hear the testimony of Passport being like, "Oh, it's going to, it has made it so much faster. We're doing everything faster." And then we hear, "No, it's actually caused more delays and further delays for processing." So I'm just trying to understand how we're in two different universes of Passport. If there's anything else you want to tell us about Passport, on why you speculate the delays may be happening.
Yeah, I, yeah, we are still very early in Passport, but I think that everyone would agree that the transition from Accelerator, where many agencies had a date where it's like, okay, we are closing on this date, and we are not going to reopen until this date, and during that period, nothing is going to happen. And there's also a common trait that, the way things are designed, if you have something that's pending, nothing else can happen. So if you've got, say, a pending budget modification on one line of your budget, that can lock you up for submitting claims to drawdown, right? So anything that is still in process can basically freeze any claiming and reimbursement activity on that particular contract. There's also a train wreck, which is called the dreaded unallocated line, which are funds that are in your contract, but for one reason or another, at the time the fiscal year started, may not have been allocated to a particular budget line. Those have to be then modified in the budget to be put into the correct budget line so you can claim against them. Getting those modifications done, and the back and forth that often happens around the unallocated budget line is an exercise of mind-boggling tedium. We have had instances of disputes literally going back and forth over dollars or pennies. These are the things, this is all the friction that exists after the contract registration process. One of my staff, who has been with Help USA for 30-odd years in this, she told me the other day, she said, "You know what? I'd rather deal with delayed contract registrations, because I know what I'm dealing with there. It's everything afterwards that's a total Wild West."
Okay. So we have a lot of follow-ups to do. But we look forward to seeing your recommendations, one pager. And then even these pain points, like, if you want to list out, like, what's wrong with Passport that either they're unaware of or they're trying to hide, we need to know. Because now we just heard that they cut Passport's funding by X dollars, and they were so proud of themselves. So now they're saying that they're going to be able to do the modifications and a lot of the upgrades in-house. So that's also concerning. Can they? I don't know. But I have to be able to ask specific questions of saying, "Are you going to be able to fix XYZ within this timeframe? And are you, or are you already working on it?" And until I know the details of everything that you're talking about, I will be able to ask that on your behalf. Thank you so much for your testimony and your time.
Thank you. We will now turn to virtual testimony. We will be calling individuals one by one to testify, and we will be limiting public testimony to two minutes each. Please begin once you hear the sergeant start the timer. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant will begin the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony.
Thank you, Michelle.
First, we will hear from Penny Bunyavirach, followed by Georgia Booth, and then Kyung-Su Kang. Penny Bunyavirach, if you can begin as soon as the sergeant's call time.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to testify, and congratulations, Chair Wong, on the birth of your child, and thank you for your leadership on these issues as well. I am Penny Bunyavirach, Director for Contracts Management at Catholic Charities, Community Services, Charities of New York. Let me first thank the council, the mayor, and the administration for reinvesting in our human services workforce by committing to a 3% COLA. Catholic Charities is truly thankful to the council for its tremendous help in achieving this milestone and advancing gender and social justice for the human services community. However, I want to highlight three challenges that remain. First, the city's human services contracts still do not cover the true cost of services. These contracts pay a fraction of each dollar of true program delivery costs, leaving budget holes that can't always be filled. It is not sustainable for nonprofits to absorb yearly increases in rent and other costs on our contracts, which are funded at flat rates over multiple years and don't keep up with the cost of services with, of the services that we provide. Second, Catholic Charities also continues to experience delays in payment for services long after these services have been provided. This is in part due to delays in contract registration, the city's decision to migrate invoicing functions from HHS Accelerator to Passport, and delays by some city agencies to use Passport to process contract vouchers. As of January 2024, Catholic Charities has approximately $12 million in vouchers that are pending submission in Passport for these reasons. This amount represents slightly more than half of our total earned unbilled funds, which have severely impacted our cash flow. I would also add that our contract extension to serve asylum seekers has still not yet been executed, and we've been waiting nine months into the contract term, spending these funds in anticipation of getting this extension. Finally, many nonprofits are not provided sufficient training or resources to meet the complex requirements involved in the city's contracting process. This has become even more challenging in light of the city's transition from HHS Accelerator to Passport to process contract vouchers. The city must urgently reform its procurement and payment process. We applaud the city's efforts to reinvest in human services workers. We are especially encouraged by INTRO 243, introduced by Councilmember Hudson and sponsored by Chair Wong, Councilmember Wrestler, and Deputy Speaker Ayala. This measure would require indirect costs to be covered at contracts at a de minimis rate of 20%, which is a welcome change from the current de minimis rate of 10%. We thank Chair Wong for being one of the sponsors of this bill and urge the council to pass this important measure. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Georgia Booth, followed by Kyung-Su Kang, and then Ashley Chen. Georgia Booth, you can begin when the sergeant's called the time.
You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Georgia Booth. I'm Executive Vice President at Children's Aid. I want to thank Chair Wong and the members of the committee. Congratulations, Chair Wong, on the birth of your child. For over 170 years, Children's Aid has been committed to ensuring that there are no boundaries to the aspirations of young people and no limits to their potential. The nonprofit sector, as you know, is an invaluable part of New York City's safety net. Nonprofits like Children's Aid stand in the gap, partnered with government, to ensure our communities remain resilient and vibrant. However, procurement and contracting decisions by the city continuously undermine our ability to remain fiscally solvent and maintain the services to many families who depend on us. The FY '24 city contracts for Children's Aid makes up 54% of our budget. Though these contracts, through these contracts, we operate foster care, preventive services, birth-to-five, early childhood programs, community schools, after-school, summer programs, SYEP, to name a few. Our contracting issues arise from delayed contract registration, delayed payments, not receiving full contract indirect costs, recovery, and constant shifts in the direction that vary from city agency to city agency. For contracts that cover staffing expenses, delayed contract registration can be particularly challenging, since we are hiring and opening staff lines without assurances that the funding will be received and we will have a clear timeframe for when we will receive payment. This creates a financial burden on our organization as we front the cost, and it can take two to three years for us to see the funds to be reimbursed. I would like to highlight a recent example of our contracting delays. For FY '24, we have, we have six early childhood education contracts whose budget has still not been fully approved by the Department of Education. This comes after several months of back and forth with DOE. The implication of this delay is that we cannot invoice for the FY '24 fiscal year. So for nine months, we've provided services without the ability to bill and claim for them. We are encouraged to learn that the transition from HH Accelerator to Passport, however, the city poorly communicated around the transition and how the process was going to be managed, leaving us and fellow providers in limbo for payment. As of last month, we can no longer perform financial functions like budgeting and invoicing in HHS, in the HHS system, as these functions have transitioned to Passport.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. If you have more testimony, you can please submit to testimony@council.nyc.gov, and we will read your written testimony there. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Kyung-Su Kang, followed by Ashley Chen, and then Paula Magnus. Kyung-Su, you can begin when the sergeant's called the time.
You may begin.
...on contracts. My name is Kyung-Su Kang, representing University Settlement Society of New York as the grants contract administrator. University Settlement has been serving New York City for 138 years. York City for 138 years, providing vital social justice services to immigrant communities and low-income residents. Like many other community-based organizations, University Settlement relies heavily on the city contracts to deliver essential services. However, this contract often failed to fully reimburse us, leading to financial challenges and reliance in delayed payments. Currently, 60% of our FY24 city discretionary contracts totaling $338,000 remain unregistered, hindering our ability to provide critical community programs. We acknowledge the city's efforts in implementing Passport to streamline procurement, but technical challenges persist, causing delays in contract registration and management. These challenges include portal instability, data loss, and communication inefficiencies. The resolutions have been slow, and the process involves multiple stakeholders, resulting in rapid communication and impacting our operations. The recent data migration from HHSA to Passport resulted complicated contract registration with critical document loss during the process. This has forced us to seek MOC assistance, creating significant huddles and adding more time to the process. Timely payments are essential for our payment, uh, operations, and we urge the city to consider providing advanced payments on all contracts to ensure uninterrupted services. Additionally, we highlight the discrepancies in certain contracts that do not fully support our city-approved indirect cost rate. University Settlement is committed to serving New York City's diverse needs, but fair contract rates, registration, and timely payments are crucial for our sustainability. We support initiatives to enhance contract, contracting efficiency, contracting efficiency, and look forward to collaborating with the city council and administration. Thank you for your attention, and I'll be submitting longer written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ashley Chen, and then Paula Magnus. Ashley, you can begin when the sergeant's call time.
You may begin.
Uh, thank you, Chair Wong, and members of the city council for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Ashley Chen, and I'm the Policy Analyst at the Chinese-American Planning Council, CPC. CPC is the largest Asian-American social service organization in the US, providing vital resources to more than 80,000 people per year. Our revenue is approximately half New York City funding, with approximately one-third being state funding, and the remainder being federal and private funding. Because we are so heavily reliant and restricted on city contracts and funding to provide our life-affirming services, we are grateful to testify about issues that impact the communities we serve, and we are grateful to the council for their leadership on these issues. We are grateful for the council and the administration's commitment towards establishing better wages for city contracted human service workers. The administration announced a historic investment of $741 million as part of a COLA for an estimated 80,000 human service workers. This is part of years of Tyler's advocacy of the Just Pay Campaign led by the Human Services Council, HSC, and we were thrilled to work with the council and administration on this. We need to ensure that the COLA is swiftly implemented to get all, to get to all human service workers, and that the implementation is straightforward and simple for providers without impacting programs. We also urge the council to seek guidance on how unionized staff will be included. We also note that this COLA is just the start to rightsizing the wages for the human service sector, a chronically underpaid sector that is primarily staffed with immigrant women of color. We also urge the administration and the council to carry forth the energy from the COLA victory, to push for an automatic yearly COLA and the full prevailing wage bill to ensure adequate and thriving wages across the sector. We also appreciate the city clearing a backlog of more than $4 billion in contracts and amendments. However, the administration and the council need to set clear and swift procurement timelines to help relieve future delays. We urge the council to pass Intro 511 to this end. Lastly, we are grateful to see legislation that increases in the transparency of the procurement process. We urge the council to make sure that this does not create additional administrative and reporting burdens from already overburdened providers. By ensuring transparent and swift procurement and robust human service wages that our staff can depend on year after year, we can better serve our community members. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Paula Magnus. And again, if there's anybody who is here virtually who still wishes to testify, um, please raise your hand on the Zoom. Uh, Paula and Magnus, you may begin when the sergeant's call time.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Wong and committee. My name is Paula Magnus, Deputy Director of Northside Center for Child Development. By the way, I love seeing you with your newborn, newborn. I actually shared this beautiful scene with my family that are also, uh, working nearby. Uh, but I want to thank you for your diligence in moving the contracting system forward in a positive direction, as there is so much to do. Northside's behavioral health and educational program serves 700 children a day in three barrels. As a nonprofit organization with over 78 years of service with history based in Harlem community, in fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 23, Northside's operating financial position, on an average, care to deficit, added with the obstacles of underfunding, delays in payments, and budget modifications being rejected for immaterial reasons, puts our agency in harm's way of not being able to survive. We cannot have the city's mental health providers risking insolvency, insolvency, while a JAMA health form is reporting that 38% more people are in mental health crisis since the onset of the pandemic. With mental health and education professionals in short supply, the city must increase reimbursement rates for social service providers and thus keep us solvent. With contracts going through the system without added administrative burdens, then we will have at least the agreed-upon funding to attract and retain top talent to serve the city's at-risk children and families. If the city doesn't move these contracts forward quicker, as well as increase this funding going forward, the mental health crisis will likely yield even more tragic consequences than we've seen. We need a mentally healthy workforce to keep the city running. The city's insolvency inducing low rates are made worse by the city often taking six months or more to register contracts. Is that time?
Yes, but you can wrap it up if you can.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. So at the start of each fiscal year for several months, each cash crunch, agencies such as Northside are the most at risk. But here's where it gets in there. Six bugs in Passport that slows down the registration process, which we've attached to our longer, uh, our longer testimony. But I can tell you, we have waited four years for our capital contract to be registered, and we just got notification from the city a week ago that they just found the money and they've encumbered it. And now it's going to take us 90 days. By May 16, 2024, we may receive the cash. So I just suggest, uh, Chair, that if you need any of our agencies to sort of walk you through some of our specific detailed problems, we can help you do that. So you can find out exactly where these glitches are taking place, because there's quite a few. But thank you, thank you for your time. And again, congratulations to you and your family. That's real important. Thank you.
Could you please send us written testimony and the details of your contract, and we'll follow up?
We'll do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming to testify, um, in person and remotely. And this hearing is officially now adjourned. Thank you so much.